State Board of Education is now called to order. Dr. Mackey, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. So first things first, we're just going to ask Mr. Walker and his crew to just come up to the table there. We may have to bring a chair with you or something. Let's just have a conversation. I know there's some, I knew there would be a conversation, a question about Huntsville. Dr. Reynolds tells me he's already asked that question. So we really appreciate it. Gentlemen, a couple of board members mentioned me coming off the stage. They want to come see it. I know that it's open. I mean, open to visitors. I've come in and toured.
I've been a couple of times, brought superintendents and career tech directors and legislators, and it is so impressive what you do. I thank you so very much and the partnership that the schools provide, the transportation and the counselor. There's a full-time counselor there, so if there are tendence issues or discipline issues, anything like that, the counselor, because you've got, you know, people that are industry people that don't necessarily know how to integrate that into a system for a school. And so it's a beautiful partnership. And you even have, or you used to have, like Employee of the Month.
Yes.
So you had their pictures up, and that was fantastic, too. It was very positive reinforcement. And I talked to some of the kids that were there and said, "What would you be doing if you were not here?" And many of them said, "I would not be in school." So I just see it as a great opportunity for many of our students, and I applaud what you do. So I'd like to see you expand all over the state.
Well, I keep telling them that, too. And one of the, when I was there, I know one of the things y'all were doing, and I guess you still do it, and I want to put you on the spot, but you worked on clothes for kids. So like, some kids needed steel-toed boots, they have steel-toed boots. You don't want a child to, well, not where you can't come because you can't afford steel-toed boots. Y'all had, I don't know how you did it, but you had, you made sure everybody had what they needed.
Well, I can clear that. We have some partnerships with suppliers and personally know some people that was willing to step up, and that's on a case-by-case basis. We don't, I don't advertise that with the students, but if a student comes up and has trouble getting that, we have partners that'll step up. Red Wing Boots is one of them.
Absolutely. Well, I just think that's great because you, again, you, every child doesn't need that.
That's right.
But you're not going to let that be a barrier. And that's one of the things that we hear, you know, in school and even out of school. This week, Dr. Cole mentioned, we were at Governor's Work-Based Learning Summit, and that came up multiple times that they were, these were people who graduated from school, but they were getting them back in the workforce. And it was, it's these other barriers that kept people, not that they didn't want to work, but other barriers. And so how do you identify those and make sure that you knock those barriers down? And I appreciate that y'all do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Mackey, I want to thank you especially for our program and the vision going forward. We've sat down with the Governor's Office and shared with State Department, Dr. Mackey and his team, where we want to take this. We wanted to wait and make sure we had it figured out. We don't always have it figured out, but we're doing our best to make it happen. I will say for our program that it takes about 100 active companies behind this, right? A lot of programs that we look at across the state typically have one or two, but we have 100 contractors, to your point, whenever anything is ever needed for funding, the things that don't, that always crop up, we have a robust group of contractors. So thanks to this board, again, we could not do it without you. You're one of many partners, and we are just here today to say thanks for this.
I would like to say before, I know, Dr. Reynolds, that we certainly welcome you to the Huntsville community, not Huntsville City, but the entire community.
Absolutely.
Because we have experienced rapid technological growth, and it's much needed. This program is very desirable, and I'm sure you'll get more than adequate corporate cooperation and cooperation from our school systems in that area. And I look forward to working with you and greeting you as you expand in the Huntsville area. And I thank you for your willingness to do that.
My last closing, this is pro-work. We're not anti-education. We want our students to go on further, but we tell our students, "Let the, go to work and let the company tell you what you need for further education or training," and make them pay for it. So we're pro-work, and we, to what Mark and his team do, the fall break, winter break, spring breaks, I cannot stress enough, by us giving someone a job for a week and getting a meaningful job and putting money in their pocket, the like, well, goes on immediately. So then they're tied in and they're invested in our program, so.
I'll tell you one, go ahead.
I was just going to say, one of the things, and I always love hearing from the students, where they said they came in with zero skills, but yet they knew that when they walked out, they would have them. So that gave them sort of a structure and a platform upon which to build. And our kids need security and stability, and I applaud that, that they felt comfortable enough coming in with, what they said, their words, not mine, zero skills in that arena. Now, may I ask you, are there, I know you have different arenas. Do they test different arenas to determine what is their best fit, or do they sort of go right into something, may I ask?
They fill out an application, and they, of our five trades, they circle their number one, two, and three picks.
Okay.
And look, it's so competitive, you don't always get your number one. You might take your number two or even your number three to get into this. We've got such a history now where the students know, "Once I get into the school, it's where I need to be."
And we also use a lot of our resources, and Russ does this when he goes out and recruits, and I'm a part of the recruiting process, but we tell the kids when we talk to them before they even fill out the application, you know, "Are you technically minded? Do you like reading wiring schematics? You know, you might fit better in HVAC or electrical? Do you like just putting things together, building things? You might fit better in carpentry?" And then we also refer them to the great resources that Alabama provides, and that's GoBuild initiative. They can go to the GoBuild website, they can watch videos on different trades, they can look at pay charts about, you know, how much those pay and where the different career paths are at. So we have some great resources right here in Alabama that our kids, they will refer to, and we refer them to all of that.
Got you.
To make a good decision about what craft they want to go into.
Okay.
So that's kind of the process. We don't test, but we do refer them to where they can make a good, sound decision.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for what you're doing in the Jefferson County metropolitan Birmingham area, because I did see 11 of my school districts that are represented. But I have a question. I know it's an academy. So do they begin as a freshman, or is it so long of a process? How long do they actually stay there for the duration in order to get, say, HVAC?
Up to two years.
Okay.
So you are eligible to enter our program as a junior.
Okay.
Now, we prioritize seniors when we're looking at student applications because we can put those students to work obviously faster. But for juniors in our program, they have opportunities for internships, and he's mentioned during the breaks of the school year, but then that summer, that's an eight or nine-week internship, and that's a powerful experience for juniors.
And they're paying.
Yes, they're paying.
That helps. Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you're doing. Do you all have an expansion plan?
Yeah.
Well, so, so if you look at, you know, state Alabama, obviously, Birmingham, Jefferson, Metro area, we're, you have a lot of opportunity, but also Huntsville, we're kicking that off this fall, and naturally Mobile. And then we are looking at, how do we reach, look, I come from East Alabama, right? I'm over Randolph County. So there's, rural Alabama is near and dear to me, and how can we get this, maybe not to this scale, but there's things, how do we connect our companies and employers to those good folks in that, those areas? And that's what we're looking at. I don't have an answer for you today, but yes, ma'am, we would love to expand should, you know, we've got to get Mobile out of the way, and we've got to get Huntsville over first.
And how far, do you have students that travel 30 minutes? Is it longer than that? I know, like, some of them are pretty far.
I think it's maybe far out of Pell City coming to our program, and we've had actual students before, and those students ride a bus. Let me say that, so.
And we've had, we've had the actual students that will meet the Moody kids and ride in on the Moody bus, you know, so.
That's right.
The kids work out logistically because they want to come to us as well.
Yeah, St. Clair County kind of has a network. They'll have one bus that stops at this school, and then they finally, they wind up on I-20, and they take a ride and come off, so.
Take a ride.
That's right.
I have a question.
It's fine.
It's more about safety, so in case our parents have questions, and the commercial building industry is a very serious business with a lot of safety concerns and OSHA requirements. So how do you handle the liability of having students in those areas of working with heavy machinery and that sort of thing? And how has that progressed as youth progress?
From the education side, let me respect that real quick. Obviously, the PPE, we mentioned, that's something, that's a non-negotiable on our campus. We also have, obviously, my presence there, Ms. Poindexter, our counselor, her presence there, we have supervision of those students. And so not only with us, but the instructors, and then they're getting that essential construction and safety training that they're going to need, and they leave our campus not only with NCCER credentials, but OSHA 10 certification.
So just to add that just a little bit, I think maybe leading up to the internships, we cover NCCR basic safety, like Russ said, at the very first year, and we get our kids focused on safety, outfitting them with PPE. And when we do that fall break, they've just had that safety course, you know? And then we go through the Christmas break, and then going into the spring break, our students just completed the OSHA 10 with their instructors. And so now, that's right before the spring break, so when they go out and feel they've got that fresh on their mind. We also have industry speakers that come in on a week, on a weekly or at least a monthly basis, and talk to our kids about the industry, the career path in the industry, and they always start that conversation with a safety moment. So they're actually seeing the things that they're going to be experiencing out in the field and the same processes. So our kids are as safe as they can be, and we teach them to keep their heads on a swivel and pay attention to what's going on, and we tell them about the habits of the industry every day, day in, day out. This goes back to our industry, our instructors come from industry, so they're able to tell them all that.
What's your ratio male to female in your program?
I would say, I would say 10% female. Yeah.
10% female, but you are seeing some females wanting to go into the.
Absolutely.
I think it's an excellent opportunity for young ladies to learn about the industry.
Absolutely, it is. One cool thing that you mentioned about females is Fabark Steel in Oxford, Alabama, they hired one of our helicopter caloway from Pell City, hired her, and she was the first female in 50 years at Fabark to certify as a welder, and she is still there today, three years later. So she is, so Fabark made a big deal out of that. They were happy to get her. They've hired about four of our students. They're all sticking and doing a good job. So we've had some very successful females out there.
That's great. I want to say that I really appreciate what you do, and that Technical College is college. I'm a big supporter, that is college.
Yep.
I want to share with you very briefly, I know a young man who was in a problem very similar to what you are doing. He had dyslexia, he struggled in school, his dad was in prison, his mom struggled to make a living. He had a wonderful counselor who talked to him and said, "I think you're a good fit for this." An unlikely candidate. He went into industrial maintenance, he worked at a, at a job, they put him, trained him, worked, they had, he had money coming in. He finishes in August at the Technical School. He's already been offered a full-time job, making more money than his mother, who is a teacher, ever dreamed of. So y'all are doing God's work.
Thank you.
You are saving lives, and you are stopping that cycle of poverty. I really appreciate, thank you for what you do.
I'd like to add one more comment. The term you use, craft, is very important. People's perception of what you do, to reference it as a craft, as a skill level, as a profession, is very important, and people's perception is often guided by the words you use, and I do appreciate your referencing it as a craft, because it certainly is a craft skill. And we're imparting, as she said, at base skill levels for some of the people who get college degrees, at least they're perhaps sometimes more skilled than some of our college degree people. And I acknowledge and appreciate that.
I could speak from my sons that are both in the construction and maintenance industry. When they graduate high school, they have, I've got a 26-year-old just finishing his bachelor's degree in occupational safety and health, but focusing construction, and he's been working in construction the whole time, and going to Skilled at Night and Online, and finishing his bachelor's degree. So I'm not telling these kids to do anything that I'm not pushing my own children to do in their, in their career. And he's found a career. He's in workforce development and training with the rest of the board out there, so. I tell these kids the same thing, you don't have to go to four years of college and go in-depth to get an education, so.
Thank you very much for what you do.
So I'll just add just a couple of final points. So this is set up like a technical center kind of schedule in terms of, you know, kids come to that school, particular electives, and then they go back to their base school. What that means is that we mentioned 11 school systems and 31 different schools?
About 15 systems, 31 schools.
15 school systems, 31 schools. That requires an immense amount of cooperation by those principals and those superintendents, because these are students who are operating outside of the normal Vail schedule. And so they have to be flexible and allow this kind of project to take on, because if they didn't want to cooperate and play ball, the kids wouldn't be able to come. So they have to be, you know, some of the students are on the bus for 30 minutes, some of the students may be on the bus for five minutes. There's a lot of flexibility that has to be applied there, and so the partnerships with those career tech directors, those principals, and those superintendents are critical pieces of what we do. Also, I don't think, we talked a whole lot about the facility, but we did mention the partnership with AIDT. AIDT leases the facility and loans it. It's basically, you know, there's a partnership there where we have, where we, the academy has access to the facility. That's a huge piece, because if we didn't have the building, there wouldn't be a program. So we're certainly grateful to AIDT for the part that they play in making sure that we have that strong partnership. And I know you guys are finalizing some important dates coming up, signing days or interview days or something like that.
May the 11th.
I think so, May the 11th. So you guys send me the formal invitation. I will funnel that through to Mr. Martin's out to you guys, and board members, to see if you're available and want to come. That would be a great day where you can see the kids, you know, reaping the reward of the work that they've done, and the contractors on site, you have a chance to interact with some of them as well. That could be an awesome opportunity. But even still, even if that's not an option, we can easily arrange, you know, days for you to come individually or as a team, however you want to do it, to see the facility. But it's an outstanding program, and it's a true private partner, partnership, private-public partnership, and it takes a lot of folks to be willing to participate for the benefit of the students. That's what it's really about. And so it's doing wonderful things, and we're proud to be a part of it here at the department, and proud to help to support the expansion down into Mobile, then into North Alabama, and then like Todd said, want to get out to some of our rural areas and make some reaches out, maybe in the Black Bell, and then into East Alabama, and West Alabama. Some of them, you know, the I-65 corridor is important, but the students out in the rural areas are just as important. And oftentimes have got the exact skills we're looking for, just got to get it harnessed and get them pointed in the right direction. So I just thank you to the board, Dr. Mackey, for the support on this project to keep it running. It's very exciting and looking forward to seeing what comes next.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank y'all.
Y'all welcome. I think we, yeah, we go on upstairs.
As soon as we get started, it's probably hard to stop.
That'd be good.
We will recess now until 12:30.
So we'll go up, we'll go eat after the program. It'll be about 20 minutes, about like the others.
And we'll reconvene.
We do want a picture of y'all under the flag after they finish with the students, so please don't run off too fast. Do you want to go up to the third floor and hold the flag?
Absolutely.
So you go to the third floor. Yes.
Yes. Absolutely. Oh, we got to. The work session of the Alabama State Board of Education is now reconvening at 12:30. We're going to get started with superintendent updates, 1A, reorganization for the Division of Administration and Finance.
Okay, got it? So both of these, as you see our presentations today, they're not really, two of these are just leftover from the retreat, and they're just, they're items you already have, so we're just answering any questions on them. The reorg, we talked about this a little bit, or I talked to some of you about it individually. So what, what I would like to do, right now, it is complete reorganization, but it is a reorganization. So Dr. Payne is now an assistant superintendent. He took, I mean, go back technically, he took Perry Taylor's position after Perry was promoted into that position. This is a, that assistant superintendent's position was actually created under Dr. Richardson. And so it was over originally buildings, buildings and maintenance, child nutrition, which is of course our biggest, people forget sometimes, child nutrition is our largest and most expensive program, and transportation, which is our second-largest program. So Randy came in and took that over, but as y'all know, we've also expanded that. I've had, I gave him resources, here he comes in. So I might ask him to come up here and sit at the table, too. And generally, he's just been helping us with strategy, helping me with thinking about strategy. So when Andy left in a hurry, as you remember, he got the offer in Huntsville and then was gone within a couple of weeks, Brandon stepped in in that role in the interim. So this session, he is also, in addition to his other duties, taking over the budgeting piece, working with the legislature. And so what I would like to do is put him permanently in that deputy job where he's serving now as the interim. And have all of these, you see that, it's a little different structure from the instructional side, because he would have actually like 10 direct reports. Now, some of those are pretty self-functioning units, like transportation. I mean, that you do have to, you have to manage it, but we've got a really strong transportation department, we have dedicated staff there with Chad, and so they, they do their thing. CMP was something, we had to do a lot of internal reorganization in CMP. Fortunately, Dr. Payne helped us with that, guiding that process. But we have a really strong director now, and it's on good footing. Biggest issue with CMP this last many months has been all the COVID stuff. So they've had to handle all the extra COVID, the summer programming, working with EBT, the PEBT program that DHR does. I got a message while we were out at the break on that again this morning, so those things. In the way the department's organized, so we have two superintendent and there's two deputies. There's the instructional side, Ms. Martin handles that. The other side is administration and finance. So you see on here what all that includes. So it's our personnel and human resources, which we've also, of course, hired a new personnel director, we have a new trainer, we've started now doing trainings for administrative assistants, which, secretary of staff, which we'd never done before. So that process is really going well. She's got, putting plans in place for even trainings for all of our senior staff, and I've started going through the training, because she's getting all of us on a professional development regimen. Information systems, so all of our IT, we call it IAS, information systems, but most people call it IT, all of that is on the admin and finance side. This position of finance director is an open position. Now, that was originally, the title's a little different, but this is a position that was Vera, we had Vera Gatler, somebody remember, Vera retired, and Mr. Craig never replaced that. That was one of the things, he, you know, he's a finance guy, he liked that, but one of his, his party's advice was, you've got, you know, I've left that open, but we really should get a finance person in. CMP, LEA supports, which Ethan is leading that work now. Ethan, of course, you know, is a master computer programmer, that's his background, but also has really stepped in to take over some of that building, building construction management. We don't oversee K-12 buildings, remember, but we do oversee the contract part. So when they, when they do a contract with a new architect, that comes in to us, to look at the contract and that kind of thing. We have a whole section of folks that do that. Transportation. Then this second line, fiscal accountability services, fiscal accountability services for Dennis and Sonya, SDE accounting, so that's our internal accounting, and then LEA accounting manager, Greg Cacklehopper. Again, those are, these are all functioning units, but it's a big section. What Dr. Payne brings to this also is we really want to go a step further into developing departmental strategy and research. So we need our own research arm, we all talked about that, PCG has recommended that. We've not had the finances to do it, we're going to have a little bit of the finances through the Numeracy Act, because there's actually some money in there for math research. So, and we're, we're going to try to piece together a few positions, we'll pull some people who are currently here. Now, they'll still do the work they are, but people who are already working in research will try to make a cohesive unit. And then just thinking about strategy, what are the things we need to do to make sure that we're supportive for the future? So what you see here is a reduction in staff then, because I've not proposed that we replace that assistant superintendent's job. But if we don't replace the assistant superintendent's job, then we do have to hire this finance director piece, because we really need that, we need one more person. So whereas we have the finance director's job open, currently we have finance director's job open and the deputy superintendent, Brandon's the assistant superintendent, but filling in is the deputy, too. We would, the proposal is, we would do away with that assistant superintendent's job, but fill the finance director's job, and Dr. Payne become the deputy. And it saves us about, I think the total we net out, about $30,000, because the finance director's a different salary level. Of course, we can keep that as an assistant superintendent's job, and we post it as a higher salary, but we've looked at it and looked at possibilities out there, and we think we can probably get a really good person for that range. So Brandon, you and I, we've talked a lot about this, I'll let you talk some and answer any questions about it.
Sure. So one of the big things that we're looking at in that was how to strategically align the operations, both internally and in our supports to the LEAs, because when I came last January as the assistant, that was, you know, initially was to oversee child nutrition, transportation in school facilities, and to work with those which directly impact our LEAs. And then internally, I started supervising HR after being here for about three months, and then we had a period of time without a director, so we kind of filled that in interim-wise as well with myself. But what that brings to you is the way that, the way that we operate internally here certainly impacts, especially on that non-instructional side, from a, from an allocation and an operational standpoint, the physical being of our buildings, our students' transportation and their feeding and those things. And so trying to streamline the way we do that, and then bring a greater awareness to budget and that, budget creation and analysis. One of the big things that I learned in about five years working in the industry side of things as a consultant for education across the Southeast, and we did this with other state departments, and the state of Tennessee on their finance side and their data analysis, and the way that pulls in is you have to look at not only the dollars, but the data, and how the two cohesively work together. And so to do that, you've got to build a robust system, and you've got to have a team of people that can analyze that correctly, can, one can create it on the front end, what the estimates are, but then analyze it to determine where are you getting the greatest return for the dollars that you're spending. And the dollars being spent need to be returned in academic achievement, which is one of the things that we all talk about, you know, consistently, and Ms. Martin and her side and team do a great job at moving that ball forward, but it's where can we put the resources and the allocations to drive that work faster and better for our kids. And so that's kind of what I talked to Dr. Mackey about, and that is how we strategize that, and we ensure that that happens. And then having my background previously in public education, administrator and those things, principal superintendent, was then as the consultant, working in, using a methodology called Link, Six Sigma, and then some other things with service development, the way you do that was, I really wanted to, I wanted, if I'm in the deputy role, I wanted to maintain the direct connection to our child nutrition, our school facilities, our transportation, because, you know, those are critical aspects of the learning environment, and the way we get our kids there, the way we properly feed them, but to ensure that those things continue to increase in their efficiency, that we do those things in the best way manner possible. You know, I've heard for years, and we all know this, that, you know, if we take total expenditures in pupil transportation and divide by what we're allocated to provide to the LEAs, it comes out to roughly 80, 81%. And so the reality of that is, is while there may not be more funds coming to do that, what can we do at the State Department to assist our LEAs in becoming more efficient, so that their local dollars that they have to make that 19% of get reduced, and they can reallocate that back into their classrooms? And there's some things that can be done to make that happen, but it's a slow incremental move when you're talking about statewide with 130-something districts and that, but there's opportunities there, and we're already putting some of those in place to decrease that gap, so that we take that burden off those local. to decrease that gap so that we take that burden off those local funds for those kind of things. And then maximizing your child nutrition program benefits everybody, both the school, the children, everybody gets benefit out of that. And there's certainly ways to do that where you increase that. But then the other piece of it is, is really to increase the efficiency and automation that we use for our budget and our allocations and the way we correspond that both with LEAs and then internal. We've done a lot of laying the groundwork related to internally expediting the way that we can move contracts, that we can move memorandums of agreements, that we can do those things while maintaining the integrity of them and ensuring that we comply with everything, that we can cut down the work and the labor time that it takes to get those done so that the funds are dispersed better and faster to our LEAs and our other partners. This goes, you know, that work goes well beyond just the LEAs, it goes with our higher ed folks, it goes with our partners, our vendors, a variety of people that we offset as pass through allocations for that. And there's ways that we can set that in place that'll be a much faster and more efficient process. And so fortunately, on the school facility side, we're, we're using some of those tools already, and we're getting great feedback from both LEAs and, and our design professionals and people like that, how they appreciate the fact that they don't wait for weeks to get a signed architect agreement or approval from the state department, that they get it back within the day, within two days max that's coming back to them. So they can move forward that way, especially in the supply chain issues that everybody has, they can order their equipment and materials, those things, knowing that they have the approval, that it's coming, they didn't have to wait, you know, two to six weeks, whatever the time had been in the past as we measured it. So that, that's kind of where I look at it for and what I talked to Dr. Mackey about, but as he said, I'll be glad to answer questions or anything that we've left out or didn't talk about.
So have we moved fully over to a DocuSign-like or a Finasign-like process?
So we, we are not fully there, but that is in process. We actually got the quote yesterday, Dr. Mackey and I talked about that yesterday and wanted to go to the full level. We have the full e-signature piece, which is what probably some of you ran into with, you know, variety of loans, mortgages, documents, land deeds.
We use it every day.
Exactly. And so what we've done though is we, we're looking at it now, we're getting the quote, we have the quote, they'll send it from the state resale provider for us to go to the contract lifecycle management tool. And the important piece for us in that is it gives us the ability to see at all times red line revision, see anything that goes on. So even when we're engaging with outside partners or vendors or companies or whoever it is, anybody that makes a change to that, we know what the change was, so we can manage that contract efficiently that way without it being mailed back and forth or emailed back and forth outside of a control system. So we will put that into control so that we have that. But yes ma'am, that's, that should be, you know, in the next couple of weeks, we'll process the purchase order for that and have that completed.
And I'll tell you, it's, that's one of those things, Dr. Payne brings that, when I started four years ago in this position, I said, how can we do this, how can we do this, how can we do this? And there are many barriers, y'all know that's always you've got to go through, this and that, y'all had to change the code for us to do that. But after he came on, and I guess I was in a meeting, probably frustrated one day and say, how can we get to electronic signature? It is not, was not in his area, he just said, I can take that on if you want to. And within two months, we had figured out where all the barriers were, removed all the ones except the code change, got the code change in process, and we just moved to it. So that's, he's got that kind of strategic thinking that helps us. Nobody was opposed to it, it's just so very different and it's easier to say, that is a lot of work, just, let's just keep doing the process we have, but he's, thank goodness. And, and so the next thing, I'm sorry, I mean, but is to move to that next section though, which not just e-signature, but actually developing documents so they're not having to, the paper flow go back and forth, it's gonna, they did an estimate, I mean, the, the DocuSign people came in, I, yeah, I mean, it was over 100,000 sheets of paper that moved that we would save after October 1 if we moved to this process. So it's an excellent question, but I just wanted, he didn't say enough about, I mean, he was the key mover and shaker in getting that done.
So the thing, well, the redlining is really important because for anybody that would be concerned about, can someone just make a change? Well, as soon as you redline anything and make a change, it archives the previous document, you can't initial sign or move on unless all parties agree. So it really is, gives you a layer of security with this many documents and people looking at things that no one can alter something without, you know, it archiving the previous, backing it up.
Exactly. Right, yeah, because you can compare all previous versions, whether there's two versions or there's 20 versions, you can compare them back. And one of the other things they did as, as we talked to them about moving to that model and going full-blown with it, was we wanted some analysis on what it would do for us. And to Dr. Mackey's point, it was well over 100,000 sheets of paper, something like that. The, the thing that stood out to me was it was over 66,000 hours of work that would be reduced. And, you know, and one of the things, and you have to be careful about this, but in, in the world that I was with Len's Sigma, we talk about people waste. And generally, when you say that to people, the first thing they think is, oh, he's saying there are too many people, there's too many people. And that's not it. What it is, is we have good people doing great work, but sometimes we have them doing the work the wrong way, because they're having to walk that stuff around when they can use the tools and resources we have to give them more time to do more of the great work instead of having to do the, the physical part. And so people wasting that time, a lot of times comes in motion. And so when we talk about saving 66,000 hours of work, that's 66,000 hours of work that we have in staff that we're paying for, that now can be given back to doing the greater good for our LEAs and the state and those things. And so it's not, you know, that, that's where you want to look at, is what can we do to be better and faster at what we do, but also to make it better for our people, people here and the people across the state that we service.
Dr. Mackey, just one quick question. Well, I'll let you, I'll let you go first.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Just very quickly, just for clarity. So would Dr. Payne be taking the position, referencing the code as the chief education financial officer, where the person perhaps would have a CPA or its equivalent and be responsible for overseeing the financial reports and everything submitted by local boards? So would he be taking that position or will he be more like the strategist to try to get the financial area in line for making sure we run more effectively? I'm just trying to, trying to understand.
Yeah, no, so, so the code says we will have a chief finance person.
Right.
Either a CPA or somebody.
Or equivalent, right.
Equivalent as determined by the state superintendent. I would say, yes, he'll take that position. We look back, we've never had a designation of who that position is.
Right.
In the past, the person that kind of oversaw that was this finance director, but that job's been empty. So then obviously Mr. Craig did that work. So we could, I mean.
I'm just asking for, so I can understand.
Yeah, I could designate the finance director. Now, I do think this, you got, again, three positions.
Okay.
I'm proposing that we would obviously fill the deputy's position and then at least one other. I think we can leave one of them open as was been open, but we gonna, we will need one more person. One person doesn't need to be doing three people's work. And that would need to be, for him to be able to see, oversee the whole thing, from transportation to procurement to the finances, he needs a finance person.
And the reports, he would be one of the reports.
Right. He's one that's been doing that now. So, so for instance, well, for instance, the reports we do for you.
Right.
That are the, the S D E reports. So those actually are generated by Lynn, I guess.
They, they come out of S D E accounting through the STARS program, it gives us the spreadsheet and then I broke those down into the PDF that I provided, and you'll be getting the one for first quarter here in the next week when it, when we end it, when it ended March 31st. But yes, the one I sent y'all a couple of weeks ago, that we realized Mr. Craig had left, unknown as he departed with his, he had, you know, COVID and different things. Anyway, but he left January 3rd, it wouldn't have been timed out. But yes, it gets generated through S D E accounting, it comes to me and then I go through all that to make sure, and then convert it into your budget analysis report that I sent to you all.
So the person responsible for it, yes, me the deputy. But we do need a finance director in there. Now, they wouldn't, we've already, we have an S D E accounting lead and we have an LEA accounting lead, that's Barry and Lynn. But the, and of course, we have Ethan that does the computer programming, sets all that up and we're working on the, the new foundation program model now, the new budget. But there's a, there's a place there for a, I mean, an accountant type person who's the finance director.
Okay.
But the person responsible to make sure it all gets done.
Would be.
Right there.
Can you share some of his experiences as, as it relates to finance so that we can be sure that we're in compliance with this code? Because it says that if it's, if the person does not have a CPA, but they have the experience in finance, then that could be acceptable. Do you mind sharing?
No, I, I mean, my background, I don't mind sharing, so I mean.
Can we get it in writing?
Do what now?
Can we get it in writing?
I can provide you the resume.
Resume.
Yeah, I mean, it's most everything on the resume, as far as work experience and, and degrees and things, so, I mean, but, you know, just from that standpoint of shared. Initially, my bachelor's was in mathematics education, so there's, you know, the number side of it there. But then after that, as far as serving as a building administrator, I did that both elementary and high school, and then was at the district level, I was, I was our federal programs supervisor, assistant superintendent, carry with federal programs. And so at that point, in the district I was in, we, you know, we serviced a little over, you know, five to 10 million dollars in federal programs.
What district was that?
Coleman County. So I was responsible for all of their federal programs expenditures, budgets, creation, Title I programs, all of those things. And then obviously in my time as interim superintendent there in Coleman County, worked with a finance officer there where we had about a $90 million budget and we did those things. And I was responsible as the, as the chief officer there for ultimately expenditures in the, in the operation of those programs. And then after that, as I said, when I was working in the private industry, you know, we did a lot of work with other education entities, state departments and other local districts based on finance control, budget control, processes improvement, creating pro formas where we would, we would predict what their budget would look like over the next five years going forward, and then parallel that with their expenditure so that we could tell them where they were in their I proceed of, you know, what, what their predictions would be based on economy and those things where we would drive those out so that they could.
Who did you work for in the private sector in the job?
So the company that I worked for at that time was Len Frog, they're out of Huntsville about.
I remember that.
And we worked, yeah, we, we worked across five states and so we did things with anything from a very small district to a large district. We worked with a couple of them that had upwards of 50,000 plus kids in them and some as small as, you know, 1,500. And then like I said, we also worked with Tennessee Department of Ed on their data analysis and budget flow. They're a little unique, they don't have individual or statewide systems for their C S, their finance, those things, they can, districts there can pick from five, and so we had to integrate how all those would work together. And then we did some work with some school, A school district in Arkansas where we did some budget profile, the procurement stuff. We redid the way in which they do RFPs, procurement, purchasing, budgeting, all those things there. So, you know, per se, to have the college degree of it, as it says there, not that, but, but my work around it has always been in the management of allocations and budgets for school systems and education.
Yes. Thank you.
I have several questions and.
That's fine.
As I guessed, because we think alike a lot of times. But I'll start with what I, what was going to be my last question, because I think each of you actually touched on it, having to do with what the law requires and the, the job description and the way, and not to, not to look at it as this is how we've always done it, but in compliance with the law itself. And I, I think several would remember, would recall the time when we actually not only looked at the state level, but the locals, and you probably recall that as a local superintendent, where we actually required local finance assistant, whatever the title happened to be, to have certain qualifications. And I think that's where, I think that's what you were trying to touch on, because I think that's crucial and of course, compliance with what is required in the code and the law is extremely important. Over the years, and I'll go on to the next one, but I'm, I'm with you on that. I'd also like to know before I go to the next question, the salary. You mentioned saving what, 20 or 30,000? And that includes, I assume, two positions where you're going to hire, or are you talking about one position and then you hire another person? So in, in other words, maybe we don't have as much of a savings, but that's a question I do have, I'd like to see the salaries. And even if we haven't hired anyone yet, obviously we have not since it says T V D and I don't know too many people have a name like T V D. But the bottom line is that I'd like to know what the estimated salary, and actually if we would have salary savings with that, if you have two separate hires with different salaries. And maybe you were talking about that, but I'd like to have that clear for that.
Sure. So the salary savings is because we would fill the finance director's position, not fill an assistant superintendent's position. And so the difference is about.
And Dr. Mackey, is this like on this sheet that we got, it's, what was it, in the retreat?
That's the current, yeah.
So the, the one right here that's assistant superintendent, that.
That goes why.
Do that. So let me follow before you get on your speech.
And you see there's an opening in there where it says vacant.
Let me go back to my questioning.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Because what you just said actually guided me to the next question. And I think that's part of, you know, I've seen over the years so many different organizational charts, this is unique in that we don't exist and you don't exist and just people like Jason don't exist. And so I figured there had to be more to it and I remember we had seen a little bit more. But I think we need to have the overall chart, I've never seen one that just kind of cut us out and off and, you know, whatever. I, I was concerned on that one, is it in our book? Or if you just bring.
That's what from the.
Because you're probably on the retreat.
This is just the proposed for this division.
Look at that, because seeing how we're not really connected, and I think that's important to know that there's not a real connection, there's not a line from the State Board of Education to anyone, we're just sort of in a gray area, which is appropriate for the design on that. And I think what, that's the way we've been treated recently is that we're in the gray area and you come up with some kind of, and I think this agenda is a prime example of how we just are here. And then the next thing we do is we take directives from the legislature and they tell us what to do, but we're not connected and that, that concerns me. I don't know if it was by design that you wanted to do it because it is different, it is different. But uniquely, it, it's not structured where we're connected. And that's important because the board is supposed to be setting policy. You ask us when it's convenient to hire someone who's out of the salary range and we have to pay them more because of the option that you have there, if you ask for us to approve it, that's just the reality of it. But the bottom line is that we're looking at being ultimately responsible. We have to comply with the law as far as the finance person, you want to call him finance director, you want to call him assistant superintendent, but especially since we have to set the example for those at the local level. And then if indeed we're disconnected, then tell us. But in the past, we're not, I mean, we're just floating out there, which I've never really seen in the past as far as an organizational chart. And that may be by design, but I think that this is different from what I've seen. Different doesn't mean that it's bad, different just means that it doesn't connect with what you have presented to us in the past, or actually the recent past. And so that's what I'd like to have explained, and don't look at me like that.
Okay.
Because I think it makes a lot of sense in that it doesn't make a whole lot of sense when you look at just this piece of paper. I think the chain of command, certainly we're not going to tell those under the deputy superintendent, that's not our job, we know that. But at the same time, we do have a responsibility and ultimately, if you are blamed for anything, you're not more than, you know, I always, I deflect it though, and I'll say we need to talk to the state superintendent about that, that's what he did. And so from now on, if you're not going to connect us, then just tell us. Don't just give it to us in a presentation that doesn't even include, include you either. And I don't think that's the way he meant it to be, I don't think Brandon's actually the new state superintendent, but I would like the whole flow chart and beyond just what you're trying. But I would like the whole flow chart and beyond just what you're trying to explain here and trying to justify either splitting one job into two or actually making sure that we comply with the law and we do what we're supposed to do because we actually have to set the example for the LEAs, as you know. And in that law, which we worked for because there were problems at the time, and we, we actually were helping locals at that time. And it should be something that, again, the board understands instead of just telling us like it is. And I do appreciate your qualifications, your background, but, and I think it's relevant, anything. You know, collectively, we have different gifts and we bring those to the table as a board. But this is a crucial, I mean, I want to note, for example, if there are contracts. I'd like to have the contracts, especially if I'm questioned. That's part of my responsibility. It's become like pulling teeth, not with Andy Craig, but just overall. And I think that that is important. The contract review committee, I get these little bitty synopsises. Yeah, I mean, the synopsis is okay, but it's not what we had before, which provided more information. Those contracts are contracts within our department, even though they go to the legislative contract review committee. Because I represent people, the public, they have a right to see it. If they ask for it, I'll ask for it. But that's another thing, if we're disconnected and we have been, more than I've seen it in a long, long time, that needs to be clarified so we'll know. But this flow chart does not connect with that flow chart that we had at the retreat. And I'd like before we're even addressing this to have that whole picture. I'd also like to know that we're connected and we're not just in that little gray area floating out there. Because that's, if you look at this agenda, it's kind of like what we've been doing. And it's nice to commend people, but these people on this agenda have already been selected and commended by the groups that made those selections. And I think it's great, that's part of what we should do. But, but we have more to do as a board. And that's what I don't see in that flow chart. But I do want the information about the salaries and if there is a cost saving, let us know. If there's going to be compliance or non-compliance as far as the legal obligations and the commitment to the job description, let us know. And as far as the flow chart, if you don't want us to be a part of it, again, that's the board's decision ultimately to make. And we may not even be asked to vote on this, but in the past, we actually have been. So. No, we don't have to.
Right.
No, but we have been asked to.
Dr. Mackey, will the finance director be a CPA?
Yes.
Dennis, or under finance, Dennis and I think it's a CPA, is he not?
Don't think he is, but I'm not certain about that.
He's done a lot of the streams like.
He's done a lot of finance work, but I don't think he's a CPA, but I'm not certain about that.
Are the other three on that line, are there any of them certified public accounts?
Some of them, no, Sonya is, for sure. Yeah, Sonya Peace, but, Peace, but he is. I know Lynn Cho's, if not, I'm not sure about that.
Would they have degrees in accounting?
Yes.
I'm asking.
Yes, yes, sir.
Trust me, Dr. Maggie, if I knew, I wouldn't ask.
Yes, sir, they do. They are, I'm not sure what Dennis's degree is in, Lynn's background is in accounting.
He's a, he already has a private corporation.
For a long time. Sonya is a CPA. And Mary Calhoun, I'm not certain if he's a CPA, but he oversees all the LEA accounting and has for a long time.
But many of our chief financial officers at the local level are certified public accounts.
Yes.
Said many are.
Many are, right.
No, 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 I was agreeing with you.
I didn't curb it out.
I was thinking, this is more philosophical to have to do with how you see this role. When I served at the local level, our CFO would bring in department heads and building leaders with their budgets. And they would go through those and sort of defend their budgets and the use of their dollars. And that's where efficiencies would be or inefficiencies might be discovered. Do you anticipate your role somewhat accomplishing that for us? Because I have received public input from this position that there's waste. And obviously, I don't want waste, I don't think any of us do. So with your role and your background, do you see that you would be taking on that role as well?
Yes, I do. So the way that would work in its current iteration, obviously, you know, if we pull in a finance director for budgets and things like that, we would use that person. But ultimately, it would be a meeting, very similar to what Mr. Craig has done in the past, where he would sit down with each of the section heads and including, you know, Lynn Cho's and then normally the staff accounted that oversaw that section. So we knew exactly what the fund balances were, those things. And then what the allocations were, either from pass-through accounts, from Federal Reserve monies or either state direct allocation from the budget. And they would go through that normally midsummer or, you know, midsummer time ahead of the FY '23 starting, or the fiscal year starting in October to set that up. And you go through and you do a staffing model where you do position control. You know how many positions they have, you know how many are vacant currently, and then how many more staff members they may need, especially in areas where we're looking to, to grow staff, whether it's in the numeracy, related to numeracy or things coming up. But you do that, so you have staffing first and then you come back to that with, then their, you know, expected in-state, out-of-state travel, what they've got to do to do their work and how much that's going to cost. So you have to factor that out by per diems and the various factors that would come to that. When it's out of state, it's, it's actual, so you have to do that. And then finally, what you look at is the programs they manage, which are, you know, costs that come with buying the purchasing programs. If it's something that they're using or they're passing through the schools or then their own supplies internally and those things. And so you have approximately nine to 11 categories of each section for a budget. And that's what you, you go through that and look at it. But then one of the things you have to look at in that, to me, and I don't know if this was being done previously, I know when I had my meeting with him as the assistant, looking over the three areas that we did, we just talked about, you know, the past year and the upcoming. But what I think we really need to have time to do, and I think this is one point, one reason why we would want that finance director position, is to have somebody that can dig in and look at it historically and say, okay, well, over the last three years, and we know, you know, we've got COVID, so we may go five years. But you want to look at what, what have you been doing with the budget and money you have? What, what are your encumbrances, what are your expenditures? What's the percentage of your run rate? How are you getting there? And then you want to look at forecasting. Because one of the, one of those difficult things is something that you as a board are tasked with and then Dr. Mackey, the state superintendent is, you know, when the annual legislative cycle comes up, is going to them and asking for additional money or more money in this side, but not as much in this one. This is what, that's, if you, if you're not looking at it from a pro forma standpoint where you're looking at historical and then future, and you're only looking at year to year, you miss the opportunities to both be efficient, but also targetedly impact kids and what we do with our, our models.
Well, if you look at the progression of the big goals that we've set, it's, it's natural, we're naturally going to need to ask, where are we not producing results for this, for these funds that we've allocated? And where could those funds be shifted? And I'm just, basically, I'm confirming what I think you will be doing, which is evaluating that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then reporting back to the board and we would adjust things in budget.
So, so in line with that, Dr. Maggie, so working with us on the budget, determining what we'd like to see in the budget, that's what Dr. Payne would do. And then going over to the legislature, would he be presenting the budget to them or the finance director?
Well, I've always, I've always done that.
You are presenting the budget?
Yeah, I've always done that and superintendent's always, you know, before me, superintendent's always done that. So I would continue to do that. I would defer those duties. So.
But I know there are oftentimes, I mean, you couldn't be over there, so you would determine.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, yeah, I've never missed a budget.
Not a budget here, but I mean, just in general, he would be the one that would be over there. You know, just like with Jessica Hall.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, absolutely. He would be the, he, this is, the budget chairs this year have referred to him as the new Andy. I hope they've learned his name.
Okay.
You know, I need to talk to the new Andy.
In Andy, okay.
So, but yeah, so he, so like when we've gone and met with budget chairs, he's gone to sit in with us this year. Then generally, some of those meetings were me and Dr. Payne and Jessica. But sometimes it would just be Jessica. I mean, it depends on if like, wants something right now, like one of the budget chairs called us this morning and wanted a meeting this morning. And so we, we, Jessica and I have met with him on the phone and answered his questions. So, so that's, it just depends on that. But now as far as presenting the budget and like leading the board through the budget, like we did last August, I would, I would expect to keep doing that. But the background stuff like running reports and, and these efficiencies and meeting with department heads and all, he would do that. And I think we'd do it with a team, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, one last thing. The only reason I'm asking is to hear the word finance director. I guess we'll end up saying a job description or has it already been developed? Boy, is that what the assistant superintendent has done.
We will. We'll develop a job description for finance director. Because this is a proposed change just for this side, admin and finance side of the house.
Okay.
But.
That's a good one.
But we'll, yeah, develop a specific job description for that person. But what I perceive is this is the person who would really help with the digging into legislative language with the budget. Because we do spend a lot of time on that. Is that, so as new things are developed, new paragraphs are written, old language is changed, this is a person that could help with all of that as far as the, helping the LEAs implement the budget. Again, we, we already have people, we have LEA accounting.
Of course.
We have Ethan that runs the, their, what we call allocation reports to let them know how much money they're getting. That's the computer-generated side. But an accountant who would help with that finance reporting piece, which I am not an accountant. And, and that's, I know what I want to see when I say I need this. But as far as you, how you generate that, I don't want to know how to do that. I just want somebody that can bring that to me. But anyway, I guess that's.
That's an answer, that's.
Dr. Maggie, you mean in reference to budget chair, you're talking about legislative budget chair?
Legislative chair.
Or the governor's budget chair, legislative budget?
Legislative.
And they're not in session, right?
No, she's. They always are not in session.
But, but the budgets are passed and confirmed, right?
The budget passed, as of yesterday, the governor had not signed the budget. Jessica's shaking her head, still, the governor still has not signed the budget. So it's not flawed yet, but it has passed both houses. I think she just signed it today. She may have just signed it this, today, this afternoon, so.
So did she sign the retention or?
I just saw the, the information on the budget being signed.
The Liberty Act update she had signed, yes. She'd have signed it, she had signed it this morning.
Oh, this morning, okay.
I think she signed it yesterday when I checked this morning, but yeah.
Okay, I've got a question.
Here's another question, Jim. For clarity, am I hearing you say the assistant superintendent position will no longer exist? We will have the deputy and then the finance director, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
So my first question would be, because I'm trying to piece all these organizational charts together, could we get a, a new one with your proposal? Because that, because it's confusing, because one of them shows like six different entities underneath the deputy superintendent. And then the one we got today has even more. So just to make, you know, for clarity, so that we understand what we're doing. And then a second request I have is, I appreciate so much that you sent us that, the quarterly financials. And this is a small request, but just so that I don't have to write the headers all across each page, could you please like put the headers on each page?
Sure.
And I mean, I know that's a simple thing, but I'm trying to decide encumbrances, how much money's left over and then I'm flipping back to page one each time, so thank you.
To add to that, would you put the page numbers on it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Those are simple things, but they sure might help a whole lot as we try to review it.
Thank you.
And then a couple of other questions. And some of these, I think, I had questions about the S D E business support, but I think that may be divided into some other positions on this new chart. So that, I'll, I'll let go of that question for now. Contracts, I think Miss Bell also mentioned contracts. The whole contract process is, would that be under the LEA supports director going forward? Says the LEA supports director manages LEA allocations grants, so, so on, supports facility sections with contracts and capital planning. So would that be the person we would go to when we have questions about contracts?
No, contracts would still go to legal. Your questions about contracts, but they obviously have, so they, I mean, I'm gonna have to, I'll go back to Brandon. But like if a contract starts, I see Miss Short there in A R I. They, you know, they do, they have to do an RFP or whatever. There are multiple checks and balances in contracts. So if they start a process, they're, they go through our procurement, there's a procurement section, which is on the A N F side. And that person, you know, there are a lot of people, there are a lot of people, obviously, they're not on the, on the leadership chart. But they have to get a, a control number. But the contract itself, as it goes through, is managed by legal. So, so that process is still.
Legal and accounting, yeah, of touch every contract.
So you two would be working together.
Right.
And even like from the very beginning, like the RFP process, like if something is determined to be sole source or whether it goes out for bid, you guys would be the ones that would determine whether it goes out for bid or whether it's a sole source.
Right, and we've got a template for the RFP process that we've worked really hard on and actually really streamlined that whole process. It was a mess. And Brandon was real instrumental in helping us get together a, a template where we can, you know, take that and spread it across the, the different sections where everybody's, you know, using the same process. But yes.
And is, is your title, because like on this, it just says deputy superintendent. Would, is your title, if this recommendation is done, is you're the, you would be the deputy superintendent of the Division of Administrative Administration and Finance?
Yes, that's right.
So the finance director would be under you?
Right.
So, okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head. And so, okay, so the finance director would be under you. Okay, and that person is to be determined, right?
Right, that's right.
And then the, the assistant superintendent is Xed out, so that's not. Now, I'm gonna switch gears just for a second, just trying to look at this organizational chart. I went back and read, reread some parts of the P C G report. And one recommendation, and I think we've talked about it before and you've alluded to it, is the research piece of it and the data analytics. And when we had them here last time, they were saying, you guys need to use data more. Would that fall, I mean, I know your background, you've got a strong with processes and procedures. You're strong in that area, you've got experience in that area. But like internal audit and data analytics, is that not, is the plan not to have it a separate entity, but just be within all of these? I mean, I'm just trying to understand how you plan to incorporate that recommendation into an organizational chart? And then who would have authority over, over implementing that, over seeing that it's done?
Let me start, but I'm, I'm gonna let him talk. It will kind of be throughout the department. So for instance, in the Numeracy Act, we're given some funds to set up a numeracy research section. So that's going to be under the, the new office of elementary mathematics. So that's, which is not on this side of the house. But that research piece, obviously those researchers need to be connected. We've also got accountability research folks, Paul Bonner and Marcus Vanderford, Vanderver, that will keep working on the school report card stuff, but they need to be. So there are going to be people throughout the department attached to this. And we didn't put that on here, but what we would anticipate is that we'll get a research director and put that person somewhere on this side, yes. So because Brandon's the strategy, he really does have the strategy in mind. So I think the short answer to your question is, there'd either be another box on here or feed it into one of these. So for instance, Terry Morgan, who is our H R person. But he's put in here personnel and strategy director because that's something Brandon's already thinking about. She's a very good strategy person. So how does she, I mean, our personnel's our biggest expense and it's our biggest investment. So how do we think about that as a part of the strategy going forward, the research? So it might actually could fit in that section. It might end up needing to be its own box. We gotta get this box filled first. But yes, as far as this side of the house, that's how I always say that there's the instructional side, admin and finance side, that that strategy and research lead would fit on the, on this side, the admin and finance side. Now Brandon can better, he's really thought through this, so he might be, have a lot more detail about that.
Well, a couple of things. One is Dr. Mackey points out, is in the numeracy act, it gives us the opportunity to bring in those data researchers using some of those funds. But beyond that, what we have to do, and, and this is, you know, kind of step one goes back to even the budgeting question is we have to find the funds available to set that up as it was recommended by PCG and, and we realize we want it. And then once we know where those funds are coming from, um, then it is a matter of tying both who we would want and what we need in that role, in those roles, uh, with what we already have existing. And so, I mean, if you think about it like this, one of the things that, um, obviously as a department that we need, I mean, as, we need some data scientists. We need some true data scientists, not, I mean, uh, I mean, even myself like that, I, I love data, I love analytics, I love doing the research and those things. But I wasn't trained as a data scientist and so there's a difference there. And so, uh, but what we do in that is not beyond data scientists, we also need folks that can, um, you know, use artificial intelligence, use the formulas and algorithms and things that come with that, so that we become faster in the way we predict what's gonna happen and then how we can respond to that to either improve that or contain it, whatever the case may be by that particular. And then third of that, one of the big things I see, um, but having been here a little over years, you know, most, all of the work that goes on in the department that, that impacts the LEAs is project driven. Everybody's got a project they're working on. Um, and it could be a project that happens every year, it could be a project that happens every, you know, month or whatever. But then there's big projects. And so one of the things I think beyond data scientists and people who can put it into, uh, the use of artificial intelligence, it is some true project managers, people that understand how to get you from A to B and not miss anything. Or from A to Z and not miss anything, that they're informed, they understand, they know the schedule, they can follow the schedule. They can make sure that all the people who are programmatically involved have the resources they need and know what they need to know. And then they're sharing that content so those projects get, get completed. Because one of the worst things you can have is a project that you're waiting on and you're continuing to wait on, you're continuing to wait on and it doesn't happen. So project management can help with that. And that's one of the things I think we miss, um, is having people understand the data and what's going on. Because one of the other things when you get into that with project management is completion is great, but you also have to understand why did the completion get you? And that's where it ties back to the data folks. What do we get for that completion? How did that work? What's the return from it?
Well, thank you. And what, another question I have is we've got some really talented people. And Angela Martin has got a team that is outstanding. Angela and, and Terry Reller and Melissa Shields and her whole team, Elizabeth Davis, they've worked together so well and do awesome things. But with the Office of School Improvement, you only have seven employees who are tasked with going into schools over the entire state. And they have a certain percentage of schools that they are required to go into. And then other schools can send in a request that they come in. And they are there. And I would say they work an average of eighty hours a week. And we asked last time in the budget, and I know this before, you know, you might have been actively involved, but we asked last summer that that budget be given an additional one million dollars. So that they weren't overtasked, that they weren't, uh, run ragged trying to serve the needs of our schools. And so, so far, I don't believe that they've been able to hire. Now I know some of that was, is with state employment. I know that's beyond the scope of this building. And sometimes there are hurdles with that process. But we voted on that last year and expected that to happen so that we could better serve our schools and not, again, not take advantage of our employees. So would you try your best to give them additional resources so that they can better serve our struggling schools? They do a phenomenal job. They absolutely do, but I'm just afraid that they are, even PCG said they are under sourced. And they need more personnel to do the great work that they're doing. They just can't physically be in all those places at once. And like I say, we, we allocated that money and expect it to be used for that purpose. So, and I know, you know, that you're, you're new with all this, that I would plead with you to do that.
I don't know that it was included in the budget passed for the legislature.
No, 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 it wasn't.
That's what I'm saying. You talked about the meeting we approved.
Right, right, right.
The meeting is not in the budget.
No, it was in the SDE budget. So it was in our budget.
The legislature. The budget is the legislature's budget, correct or not?
No, 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 it's not.
They did not fully, fully.
Fund it.
Fund what we requested for OSI. But we put extra money aside.
We put it in.
For OSI and we are, we have requested those positions be created by the state personnel office since last October. We, we turned all the paperwork in and they have not been, they've not been approved or denied. They're sitting in a, sitting in.
Well, and I know that sometimes it's, it's not us, but I just, I feel that, that we may lose some really good people if we don't alleviate some of the time they spend on the road. And so whatever you could do to help push that forward, I would appreciate it. And in that report that you sent us, it showed maybe, um, it's like three million dollars that was unencumbered for that department. And so we have funds there, but they just haven't been spent yet for personnel. And so, and I know you've got to find the right fit. You've got, we don't, we want our quality, right? So you've got to find the right person and go through all the processes. But I just believe that we need to support our schools as best we can. And they are asking for this. And, and Melissa and her team are doing the very best they can. I, I praise them, um, for the good work that they do. Then one last question, that was more like me preaching, but one last question, in the law, it says, if I've got the right version of the law, it says that there's some sort of competency test that has to be passed. It says, um, shall, I think, Tanya, you were reading it earlier. Shall be a certified public accountant or have equivalent experiences determined by the state superintendent of education, shall have experience in education or governmental finance, shall complete the instructional program provided in sixteen dash thirteen A dash three, um, and shall have passed the mandatory competency test as provided, and it says, you know, the section number. So.
So that's the same thing we require for the locals. So.
Okay.
It's a course that all the, yeah, all our superintendents have to go through.
That's what I was talking about.
Finance course.
Okay, thank you. Forget actually doing that and then.
University of Alabama teachers, those are every year, superintendents go through them.
Oh, okay.
I was in.
I just didn't know what that was.
Well, yeah, now that you bring it up like that, I said that, yes, I did the finance course with.
If you don't already have, he has six months to complete it, yes. Yeah, if you don't, if you've not already done it, six months to complete it. But I think he's already done that.
I have. I was in the, I think it was twenty eleven.
Even I passed that.
No, I just, I've never heard of it.
I wanna go back. So we are, I had another conversation last week and we're, we're trying to push those positions. The real, I mean, I can't, you know, it's state personnel board, so we're working with them. The, the real problem, and this will again defer to Dr. Payne, cause he's come up with a possible solution, but we have, we gotta get them to buy into it. But the problem is pay. So for us to get the people we need to lure them from the districts, you know, highly qualified people, like you mentioned, to go into districts and work, we've gotta pay them more than the districts are paying. And to do that, the, the position we have that's, that can outpay many districts, but we still have a hard time competing with districts, is called an EA two, or an education administrator two. State personnel says an education administrator is supposed to be overseeing a number of like, so many people are supposed to be working for them. They're specialists. Well, we don't, what we need are people who are going out into schools working, not people supervising specialists. If we could hire all these school improvement people as specialists, we could get them approved much more easily. But, but we, the, the specialist salary schedule does not compete with local school districts. And so we can't hire, we can't hire people on that salary matrix. So instead we say, well, we're gonna hire these school improvement people as EA's. Well, the, the formula, I mean, they have an algorithm over there and it says, you don't qualify for any more EA's because you're supposed to have so many specialists under each EA and you don't qualify for any EA's. So what we're talking about is trying to create a new position that's not an administrator position, but it pays more than a specialist position to try to lure school improvement people. Because we don't, you know, when you're talking about getting school improvement people, mostly we're trying to hire people who've been principals or, or they've been district improvement specialists. And to be hon, and our specialist degree, or the specialist, um, it's not a degree, I'm sorry, specialist, um, salary matrix is designed to pull people out of the cla, directly out of the classroom. So to be competitive to say, bring in a person who's been a, a, a fourth grade teacher to come to the department as a specialist. And it pays more than a teacher's job. But we're also asking them to work twelve months and not nine months. So when you do it on a daily rate, it doesn't pay much more than a teacher's job. And most principals with, or a central office person, they're gonna have to take a decrease in pay to take a specialist job. And so that's why we're, we've kind of are in this no man's land with personnel, because we're trying to get administrator jobs created, but they don't fit their algorithm. And we have been in this for a long time and, and there's some, you know, there's some real struggles over there too. But one of the persons that we've most been working with and she's, they, we've, they've got a lot of progress lately trying to figure this out. She passed away last weekend. And so, yeah, very young. And so, so they are now, and you know, we really, in the last month, had had several productive meetings. And then of course that's, you know, that's gonna set them back. So anyway, just know that, that is a frustration for you, is a frustration for OSI, is a frustration for me. But we're trying to.
Is there anything we, the board, could do to support you in your efforts?
I, I don't know.
You know, at this point, what I did was I ran the analysis, cause when we're talking about school improvement process, Dr. Mackey said, we're really looking at high quality improvement principals, uh, to be able to do that. Cause it's hard for a, you know, a classroom teacher to put on a school improvement person and go and meet with a superintendent of a district and a principal of a district and then, you know, not in there. So, um, but when you look at that average salary, you know, if you're looking at the average across the state for principals, it's in the mid nineties when you include every facet of principal from elementary to high school, there's different categories when you break it down. But as a daily rate of pay, that's the issue that you run into as well, is we, we have people work two hundred and sixty days. Where most LEAs, two hundred and forty is considered full time, twelve months. So you have that, so you have to really break it down to daily rate of pay. And the only data rate, daily rate of pay that our ed specialist or EA one actually pays more than is the assistant principal daily rate of pay. So you, you're all the way down there, yet we need the people on this end. And so, so what we did was we, we built, we've built a model that we're going to meet with the lady, unfortunately, that passed away this past weekend. And we've been talking to her about that. And then Dr. Mackey, um, he was gonna meet with his counterpart, Ms. Graham there, to, to share with them that if we kind of flip the model and create these positions for education, it will drive that work where we can hire those quality people and do that. And, and the way that was comprised is to eliminate, you know, a classification on one, on one of the EA's. So we have an EA one and EA two and make it a program specialist position. Where that person is not tasked with supervising multiple specialists, they're tasked with, they came with an immense amount of knowledge about how to turn schools around or make improvement efforts, and they're working in those buildings. And that's what we're paying them to do. So, um, we were in preparation, waiting on the legislative session to end and those things to get the meeting set. But we're kind of delayed by the news that occurred on Sunday. Uh, so we'll have to see where we are. But that's, that's the plan to it. And that's why, because you just can't, we can't attract them. You know, I mean, if they're, you know, no, no offense to anything out there, but if you're asking them to come to work for the state during two sixty, two hundred and sixty days when as a twelve month principal, they were getting two weeks at Christmas and a week of spring break that we don't give. And now you want them to take a less daily rate of pay, you know, it, it's hard for people to say, well, I'm gonna do that. And they're not gonna leave their home to do it, for sure. Like we're trying, you know, they're driving, you know, they're driving seven, eight counties to do this school improvement work. I mean, so we've, we've gotta fix that model and that's something we'll work on.
That for relatives, yes.
Dr. Mackey, we know that the legislature was very generous in raising the salaries of the upper level staff in our school systems. Have you begun to evaluate that impact on what you're just speaking about, on the ability to attract staff to the SDE?
Yes, sir.
Because if I were making what I was making as a principal for, as a superintendent for, cause I got the same, my contract caused me to get the same raise. And you increase those salaries significantly, how are you, are you already looking at the impact on your staffing and what you're paying our employees at the SDE level?
Yes, sir, I have.
Dramatic impact, cause you told me, somebody's calling you about for budget, are you telling them about the problems they're creating for you here?
So we have a, we, it, it does create an issue for us because of course teachers on the, uh, you know, more than twenty years are getting significant raises.
That's the kind of people we have working here.
And the, um, mo, many of the districts, as you said, have tied their principals and central office employees paid raises to that. So a lot of our principals and central office people are gonna get fifteen, sixteen, twenty percent raises. We state got four percent raise. And so, so when you look at the gap, yes, it got much, much, much smaller. And in fact, um, it, it really did flip. So if we had say a, um, you know, a thirty year teacher with a master's degree and we're trying to lure them here for a specialist job, um, I forget, we didn't look at it.
Or a doctor that you were working with.
With a doctor, yeah. It, they're gonna be, like, we can maybe pay them about five thousand dollars more. But again, they're gonna go from working a hundred and eighty seven days to two hundred and sixty. And so for five thousand dollars, not many people are gonna make that jump. We cannot adjust those matrices without the state personnel board has to do that. Those are merit jobs. And so we, um, even our non-merit jobs are controlled by their salary scale. So, so anyway, that's a, it's a problem. And again, that's part of this conversation that we have to have with personnel. Because we're the, the only state agency that really has to compete with the LEA sector. So others like the DHR, for instance, as you know, I mean, they have county offices and they have the state office, but they kind of control the salary at all of those. And when there's a state raise, they all get the same raise. So it's four percent this year. We're competing with LEAs for employees. To take that a step further, we lost several employees last year when the TEAMS Act passed because they could make so much more money going back to school for, you know, teaching for a hundred and eighty nine days than they could here as a specialist or administrator, working many more days. And so we did lose several and it's gonna make it tougher. I appreciate the question. But we're, we're in the process of analyzing that. We, um, uh, the legislature did give us the funding increase this year to pay the four percent pay rates to our employees. Last year, or in years past, some years they've passed the raise and did not include, increase our funding to cover the raise. So then of course, you know, you're having to figure out how to do that. But they did cover the four percent raise for us this year. But, but we, yeah, we're, we're in, we're gonna be in a tight spot.
Sir, pardon me. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, no, sir.
The state salary increases all start October one.
Yes, sir.
But many LEAs. But many LEAs, those that you and I both administered, know that teachers, when they come back to work, they expect the pay raises in. And many LEAs are including that in their increased budget. How will that impact the state? And how are we advising people about those cost increases? Are they fully familiar? Because sometimes the legislature has given us an amendment to the previous budget to accommodate that October, September, October, now August, September, October differential. But they didn't do that this year.
Correct.
They spent the money on the Numeracy Act, or whatever they choose to spend it on.
There were no supplemental funds to go to LEAs to pay for pay raises prior to October 1.
So LEAs, I mean, that's what the public needs to understand. Because one of the things that our role is, is to help the public to understand the reality, not just what the legislature may say or what they may read in media, but the fact that the pay raises don't start till October in the computation of days. But practically speaking, as school administrators, local providers of education, those raises typically, typically start July 1 on 12-months employees.
Me, me, yes, sir.
Systems different, each system has its own rules. But in most of my district, July 1 is the day. So July, August, September, three months are one-fourth of that raise. And it's, this year, the amount of money is so large that it's a dramatic impact on local budgets. And I hope we, from our office, your office, and everyone helps people to understand the dramatic impact that that raise creates on local systems and local people. Because local teachers deserve the raise. I'm not saying that, but it's a significant amount. When you're talking about 20% raise, God only knows, I never got that. Even when I tied my raises to employees. But my superintendent locally will get huge raises, lot, almost real money.
Yes, sir. We're, we're, we are communicating that to them, and we are answering questions on that.
And so I want to bring it up on this table, what, what Ms. Bell did, so that we're disclosing what's really happening in the real world, not what happens in the isolation of the legislature or people calling you from a budget office, speaking to, and we're not aware of that.
But you know what they do, they say, you need to call your state board member. And they, and they do.
And I, I don't have to call them, I go see them. But you're absolutely right, Ms. Bell.
That's what they do, they deflect us. And we're actually, we're always the bad guys. So now I blame him.
The last person, the last person they want to call is Senator Orr, or Senator Melson, or the people in leadership who actually put this event in action that affects human beings.
Well, sometimes they actually live out of my district, and they live in their districts. But I always, I'll, I'll even help them find the contact information for their legislators.
I do too.
For both, the House and the Senate and, um.
But since this is the first meeting since we, the legislature adjourned, I think it's prudent, and you've mentioned some of those issues that we bring them to our table, and I tend to bring some more as I show during the message this morning.
And I have a theme song for you. You need to, you know, it's been everywhere, the Go Brandon theme song. Maybe they can remember your name if they have that in the background. I mean, it was in your little while. Go Brandon, whatever that is. Yeah, it sticks in your head, so they will remember your name. I won't forget it, for sure. But anyway.
I'm not forgetting that title, sorry.
Well, I don't even know how it fits, I'm just saying it's a song itself. I don't mean it in the context, I mean it in the, it's pretty catchy, you know.
Let's go Brandon, don't miss.
It just sticks me, so anyway, I don't.
I've got one more question. And this may be beyond what you've been able to begin to so far.
Okay.
But we were talking about HR and salaries, benefits and everything else. And so, um, do we do on a routine basis something, my husband's company, and I've heard it in other companies as well, called a net promoter survey? And basically, you probably like know it from your life in industry, but where, where you survey employees of your agency, and you ask them, and it's formalized, but basically you're asking, would you advise a friend of yours to come work in this entity? And, and there's a range of ways, you know, that you can ask that to get to that information, but you're testing the morale
Right.
of different departments and, and your entire huge department. Because it is, salary compensation is very important, right? And all the benefits. But it's also, we want people to feel valued and, and that they're contributing. And, and so I just, um, with our new HR director, I wasn't sure if that was something that was being done. But that would be important to me, to know. That's a good idea.
That is a good idea. So, you know, what you're talking about there is, it's kind of like culture and climate surveys. But do you, you also, from, from an HR perspective, you get into the sphere of influence. And that means, what does this person have to do outside? And, and that can be their network of friends, but it can also be the LEAs that they work with, and how they pull that in, and how they represent that. Because, um, and, and there are certain, yes, absolute techniques that you can pull that information out. And what they do, there's some personality-based ones, and then there's some others that are just, uh, you know, function-based, they're functional. And so we can use some of those. I'm unaware if that's ever been done here in the department.
It may not happen.
But it's certainly something that, yes, it would be an advocating reason to do it.
We want our people to feel valued. They are important to us, they're important to the success of our schools and our state. And so if we are missing the mark in any way, then, then we want to figure out how and why, and then fix it.
Right, absolutely, yep, you're right. Because that, that's beyond salary and benefits. It's what else can you do to make people feel that value that they want to be there every day? They want to come in, they want to do their very best work. There's certain, until, like I said, I'm unaware, in, in the time I've been with the department, I've not known of anything like that. But we can, it's something we can certainly look into.
I've not heard of it, so it's a good idea.
I would love it if you would.
And nonprofits do it a lot. In fact, there's an award that they, they compete for an award to have best place, you know, to work. And I'm connected with one, actually, that has won that award several years. And it's a really good, I think, process, and it's done anonymously, so.
Right, exactly, we're texts.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Names and any identifying characteristics, but I think it's a good learning tool.
Oh, it would be a great, so. That's a big point, those are teaching plans, that's where you, you know, as you, as a company. We did that sign with districts when I worked with them, where you do that and get everybody's input. Good, great.
Ms. Ray, you have a comment, question?
See, if I have the straight, according to the Numeracy Act, schools have a certain period of term to come up to par. And if not, there are some dire consequences, including staffing changes. So we're going to need more and more school improvement personnel. It saddens me to think that a school might, might be closed or personnel taken out or whatever those, there are some other consequences, including a state takeover. But that's, this is the first affair we've had, that I can remember that has definite consequences for these schools. How many years do we have to get those schools up to par?
Seven, seven years. Seven years after it starts, and we don't really, it doesn't begin the implementation until 23. But yes, we, yeah, that'll be, and we have made them aware of that, that we will, between now, not waiting till 2030, but we will be asking for big numbers of people in school improvement. I mean, we've looked at other states, our size, whereas we have seven. And we're trying to go to, you know, 14 or 15 right now, but other states our size that have the kind of, like, the Numeracy Act requirement have more like 50 to 60 people.
And how does it compare to the intervention?
Huge number of people. And of course, they all come out of the districts. We rely on people out of districts.
How does it compare to the intervention? Because the only close comparison would be our intervi, Intervention Act. And there is, you know, we have steps that they have to take in order to get, um, released. But yes, it, it's, it is different.
It is.
And it, there is a definite timeline at this point, they can change it again, like they've done other things. And it's kind of fluid in their lives. But from the standpoint of our responsibility, yes, we have to take the risk.
Madam Chairman, we talked about the Numeracy Act. Do you, is it timely for us to have a review of that, or are we going to wait till later, then questions? You want us to come up with it?
Since we've completed.
Can I just add one question?
Yes. Yes, you have a question.
Yeah, I'm going to go back, we were talking about the plan of action to bring in quality personnel from LEAs and considering their salaries. But I'm also thinking on the flip end, if we're bringing people in from LEAs, and we're paying them higher salaries, how will that impact your current employees that may have new people coming in with higher wages? And so you don't have to really revisit both spectrums of how you're paying people, or you are really going to have a shift here in the culture.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're going to have a mad staff.
Absolutely, yes. To accomplish that, the way, the way you accomplish that most often is through attrition. You look at, you know, those opportunities, and then you also look at advancement for the people that are there. And so, i- if they can have that option to come into an attrition in that movement, so that you bring those people in, and then, or you're based on their, you know, their competency level, based on their experience. You know, if, I mean, um, you know, if we have someone who is already in the department, and they came from the classroom, and they're in an ed specialist position, and they don't have the administrative degree to be a principal, but that's how they got here, they have a master's in their subject area, then they may very well not qualify when it comes to an OSI where we require certification as an administrator. And so that's, that's one way you control that. So it's got to be controlled by certifications. But then, more importantly though, it's about attrition. And then it's also, and that's one of the things we talked about, revamping the scale for the positions that state personnel identifies in our classifications that we most predominantly use, which are ed specialists, ed administrators, and program directors, is to redo those so that we bring alignment, so that it makes sure everybody moves in one accord. And so that we don't have that. We eliminate as much of that as possible.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes. Well, just say, and, and people, there would be people, if we could get a new classification, there, there's no question, there'd be people in the department that would qualify for that. And we would go through the process of promoting them to the new qualification too. So we wouldn't want to have, say, we're going to have new people in at this higher pay scale and not offer that same thing to equally qualified people in the department already here. So, yes, ma'am, we, we don't want that kind of revoke.
They say, yes, someone that's here, they have a master's degree, but they've never served in the capacity of a principal or a central office administrator. They've never had the experiences that what you're talking about, you need, will require. So in some ways, it's almost punitive to have been here.
To have been here.
You know, so you're going to have an influx of people leaving, your current people leaving, going back out to the LEAs, because it's more attractive.
Right, well, and that's to Dr. Mackey's point, though, where we're talking about the fact that we've got to make sure that those people, you know, they have qualifications that are unique in what they do. So if they've been, you know, if they've been working in OSI and they've been previously a teacher with a master's degree, then, you know, that's otherwise qualified. They did something to get there, so you don't leave them behind. You, you don't ever want to do that. Because there's also an inherent knowledge, when you've done the work for a period of time, that, you know, doing the work is as important as having, you know, the paper qualification. Um, and probably more so, and I say that, having plenty of paper qualifications. But I think if you do the work, it's more valuable. And so, um, that's where you have to be very careful when you make those kind of changes. Um, and you, that's why we do the analysis and we run the tables and the models to see what that impact is. There was, you know, there's another situation that I didn't know about until I got here that occurred, you know, I think it was three years ago, maybe, where state personnel, who there again is another entity that we don't have any say to, they made a change in the way that they said someone was qualified for a certain classification. And what that did was, we had people who were hired prior to that board meeting and the way their calculations were done, and they came in at a straight pay level. And then, and so the board meeting was in December, if I remember right, I looked at this one in HR. People got hired in the exact same classification after that board meeting by state personnel, their calculation of salary was different, because they went to a day-rate calculation where they'd not previously been doing that, but they wouldn't retroactively give it to anybody before. And I actually asked that question, just tell them that. I asked the question to state personnel. So, I mean, um, so, but those are consequences that if we control it, we need to make sure they don't happen, that we don't have those unintended consequences. When it's outside of our control, you know, we're, all we can do is ask for the change. And I've, I've asked repeatedly and plan to ask again now, but, um, that's, that was an interesting one to me. So, because it was based on contract days, people come in, they take them, divide them, multiply by the number of days they've been working, that's what they get. They didn't have that provision, and I want to say it was December 2018 when they did that board meeting. That was, it was interesting to me, because I had people that were in the building that worked with me and seen people that asked about it. I was like, what do you mean? And so I went to looking, and sure enough, hired, you know, relatively four weeks apart, completely different scale. It takes about.
Way of ruining the system.
It takes, well, it's not our system, let's make sure we know that. First of all, I do want to say that, and not in front of them under that. I mean, they have their base, they're looking at the whole state. So if we were probably unintended consequence to that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Social Studies Course of Study.
So this is left from the retreat. The Social Studies Course of Study was, was up to be done. Kathy Jones with us, who managed all of Courses of Study, during the, the bad year, the COVID year, when we really weren't able to do it. Now, we were, you know, we finished English Language Arts during that time via Zoom meetings and all, but it just was so much, couldn't do two. So what we've done, I asked them to go in, so we recalculate, let's look at where we can put Social Studies. So as good as right now, we have Social Studies up in '26, '27, which I know is three years, four years away. We, um, we try not to do, again, we talk about staff, y'all know we're short on staff. We try not to do any huge core programs back-to-back. We have done math and ELA back-to-back, because as y'all know, they were both way behind schedule. So that's, so right now, we're doing a CTE, so following ETA, uh, ELA, we're doing just a CTE course this year, we finished that up. And then we would come back and start CTE over. Remember, just a reminder, that years ago, Dr. Hall's here too, but we did, CTE was all done at one time, all 16 clusters, and then it was not touched for many years. And we made the decision a few years ago, I guess my first year, they had already started the discussions about, can we divide this up? So, because it's just an impossible task to do all 16 in one year. Y'all don't have much, it's been just doing four or five. How long those presentations have been, and all, it's just multiple subjects. So we divided it up, so we're almost doing a CTE every year now. There are some breaks, but we're doing them a few pieces at a time. Now, CTE is even more complex, because the 16 clusters are, are guided by a national group, which proposed doing away with the 16 clusters and doing new clusters. There were new clusters, and they did away with some subjects and added some. But that, there was great consternation, if you will, about the new structure. I didn't like the new structure, had a lot of concerns about it. But in the end, they have not adopted the new structure. So we're still working on the old 16 clusters, but knowing that could change down the road. But where we are now, we're doing a CTE. Our proposal, or the plan right now, is we would do, um, as you think about your work going forward, that we would do in next year, science, a big one. And pull in, trying to get CTE, they wanted to line up the adoption of health science in CTE with science. So one of the things we've tried to do is get those two in align. So this would be the first time we'd ever have those lined up. So next year would be a big year, because we'd be doing a big cluster of CTE, and we would do science. Come back the next year, and we would be adopting textbooks for all of those. So we would do a smaller area and do arts education. Then the next year, do digital literacy and computer science. I know that's just one line, but that is a huge piece. That includes all K-12, you know, all grades. And then do. Um, and then do social studies. Then you see health, we would come back to mathematics. Um, and then digital literacy and computer science again, and then English Language Arts. Long term, we are trying to at least do tweaks to digital literacy and computer science more often. Dr. McCarty and I have, have this conversation. She serves on the computer science task force. And that's one of the things, I won't speak for you, but I know that's one of the things y'all have talked about. I've emailed Dawn, but we've not had a chance to meet since you and I talked. But computer science and digital literacy is obviously changing really, really fast. And that's, I mean, I'm not sure we can ever get ahead of that curve. Social studies obviously doesn't change as much because a lot of that's like history, history is history. But they also do have updates because they have contemporary issues and they have other, there are other subjects in there besides just history. We did, obviously, when we were trying to figure all this out last summer, one of the things that helped is we were named one of the best civics and, and US history um, curriculum or courses of study in the nation. And um, so I felt really good about that and that made, that reaffirmed that, that was something we could probably wait a little bit and deal with. Now, I do, realize that it doesn't just mean that nothing happens in between. So for instance, with social studies civics, we worked with the bicentennial commission to develop a lot of new lessons and new plans during those bicentennial years that teachers could use, that they can supplement, but we didn't change the standards. So there are things going on. We're working right now, actually, Ms. Jones there is working with uh, some folks in Mobile County. In fact, Ms. Ziegler put me in touch with to do some lessons around Africa Town and um, uh, the Clotilda. And so we're, with some lessons around that. They won't change the standards, but that would be lessons that student, that teachers could use across the state. Uh, that would be, you know, tied to that historic part of Alabama. So, so there's work that goes on in between, but the standards don't change. The big problem is that we adopt textbooks after we adopt standards. And the textbooks eventually, that, that's not so much going out of date, though textbooks can, but it's that they just fall apart. And if, if they go out of print, then they wanna buy new textbooks. Districts can use textbook money every year for any approved textbook. So for instance, this year, you have just approved ELA textbooks and this morning we added those supplemental speller books. But if a district said, you know, we, what we really wanna do this year is buy, and I've had two districts call about this. What we really wanna buy this year is not new ELA books. We wanna buy new, I don't know what they wanted to buy, but you know, they would say wanting to buy new history books. They can do that if they buy off of, again, an approved list. So they might, they can supplement or they might say, we're gonna spend part of our money on the ELA because we're gonna do the K-three piece, or we're gonna do just the four twelve, or we're just gonna do spelling. But then we're gonna use part of our allocation to buy, you know, additional math materials. So they can mix their money around how they want to. But this is kind of the proposed schedule. I know there, some of you have gotten questions, well, could we move social studies up and swap it with science and do social studies next year? Well, the, the very simple answer is yes. Of course we can do that, but then that throws the science off and put, you know, then we've gotta move this CTE unit two or get out of sync again, because they've been working for years trying to get science and health science in sync. So, and then, Dr. McCarty, they were asking about moving up computer science too.
Well, they wanted, they requested, and, and Dawn would certainly know more of the details than, than I do, but another request they had was to split digital literacy and computer science and make them separate. And, and so, yeah, when I, I mean, arts education, I, I remember sitting with those, they, I thought they were phenomenal standards last time. And yes, they did request that we bumped it up at least one year. And so I don't know if that would be possible, but I'm, you know, I serve with them and so I feel like I should represent their requests.
And I've sent that to Dawn and I think, didn't I copy you on that Kathy?
You did. And I spoke with Dawn yesterday. We are definitely gonna talk about things like that, the, the, you know, from time to time, the, the, the um, schedule does change, but that schedule is coordinated with a variety of entities and we just really have to sit down and look at what, explore all areas and what needs to be done. So, yeah.
If they found Kathy that like a particular, let's just say standard number four was out of date, can we go in and tweak one standard if we found out that it was no longer relevant?
I think that the, the tweaks are made, but that there's every effort, and I have to look at the standards. There's every effort to make sure that the standards are pretty much timeless and they can be adapted to what is needed. Um, we have a lot of discussions in, um, in meetings to, to not name, they need to be specific enough to know that, so the teachers know what they're supposed to be. But they need to be broad enough to understand that, that sometimes the emphasis changes just a little bit. So they have to be, be able to be current as well.
Well, yes, if you're just continue to follow with Dawn, that's.
Yeah. Dawn and I have already spoken. She called me yesterday and we talked and Sean and I talked this morning and we have, have talked with the assistant superintendent. Yeah, but there's, there's every effort to make sure that things are coordinated.
Thank you.
And so, yeah.
All right.
Yes. My question is, going around as much as I do and being at the universities and, and, and all that, a lot. And I was wondering, do you know the percentage of, of schools that are not going with the printed copies, but going with the online? Cause then it can be automatic, because a printed copy, unless you go back in with your little marker to, you know, fix something or revise it, they have to print again. And of course, that's just not feasible. That's why they're going to online, that it can be updated, revised and all that. So what is the percentage of them in lieu of the printed?
I don't know of anybody who has not, who doesn't buy the printed version. Usually you get the digital version free if you buy the printed version. But I'm not sure if anybody's just gone to digital. Does anybody know? We don't have, our, our textbook person's not down here, but we can find that out. Some may have, but even districts that are one-to-one, um, digital have, most of them have bought the printed books and then they get a digital one for free.
Well, and I was at with a group of parents, no, I wasn't, this group, group of citizens. And they were saying that, that from what they're understanding is that the textbooks are going away. Now, maybe they bought the printed and are leaving them in their book, you know, in the textbook room, but going to the online using their, their um,
Right.
digital, digital device.
Yeah.
And with that, then that can be easily updated, revised, and made more current, which, you know, is a dilemma. Cause they do fall apart or they lose them.
Right.
Or it rains on them. Didn't they done that? No, that. Or the doggy, right. So anyhow, I would be interested if you don't mind.
Okay, yeah, we'll ask that. We, I'm sure we probably get that from Publishers Warehouse pretty quick because all the districts buy through one repository and we can figure out what, well, we'll try to find it two ways. One, who is, is anybody and if so, how many are just buying digital.
And then.
But if they're getting digital and paper, do they have, yeah, do they know which one they're using?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'd be glad to find that out.
Yes, Miss Bell.
Okay. First of all, you don't get anything free from any of those companies. So it should be actually included, uh, you pay enough. But since I had requested the, the updated version of the adoption skid cycle, especially because of the social studies um, and everything related, I've been asked by a number of people, including some with archives and, you know, the group that was brought together or committee. And then there were some, um, and I get the archives magazine. So I, I can tell you that some of the things that are going on. And that has been mentioned in, in the past year. But it has been, and part of that has been this cycle where you just get used to it after a while, you know, it's about to come, you know, it's time for science or it's time for math because you're used to that six-year cycle. And I'll get to the last question, but I do, in mentioning social studies, part of it has been brought up by others regarding the textbooks. And one was a, an Alabama history textbook author recently in an article, I don't know if anybody read it, uh, it was online. And I have to correct it. I sort of corrected it with several of you because I brought the textbook back. I'm one of those that actually happens to keep some things I think will perhaps in the future become controversial or questioned. Um, I didn't have the original article, but I had it in five somewhere, uh, related to this article that was written. And for whatever reason, the reporter's questions went to spam, so I never had the opportunity to respond. And if I had, uh, number one, I would have pointed out that I have not only that textbook, but I have two others that were actually approved at that same time, that were actually better and had more content that this one author was claiming. We were rejecting it because it was full of whatever content. The fact is that the reason why it was rejected by not the board necessarily, but by the textbook committee, they had three books. This um, particular book was rejected because it had a long page full of errors. And frankly, I could not approve, I could not vote for, and they recommended it. And if I, I showed you the little page, it has all those, those errors on there. Then I had several letters from people who had found errors in that. One had to do, for example, and this was mentioned in the article, it wasn't the only one. There were actually some bigger um, errors, uh, facts that were just not facts. One had to do with the Battle of Shiloh. And if you live near that part of Alabama and Mississippi and Tennessee, and you do, you know, there's, everyone thinks that the North won. In the book, it said the South won, that Battle of Shiloh. And so, um, if you know anything about history, you don't even have to know a whole lot, but that's just what is known. If you've ever been to the location, the North won. And so the point is that there were so many factual errors brought out by other people, including the committee, that it had to be rejected by the committee until it was corrected and they get, they offered that invitation. And so I see this, what I'm trying, what this is leading, there was another one, for example, they mentioned in there that I was, had something to do with welfare and birth control. Well, the reality is that the life skills book did not comply with the law, the abstinence law that required mention of abstinence. It was the law that actually, um, the textbook committee was trying to comply with. And then the other part of it is the welfare part. It was a book that was actually for students who had some challenges, physical and mental challenges. And the parents especially wanted the children to be able to become uh, independent versus dependent upon welfare. And so they, the parents actually, and not just the committee, the parents didn't like the information that was included. All of that is to say that I see the swell of trying to create some pre deliberation type um, controversy over history. When, again, I go back to that one Alabama history textbook, they tried to make it something that it was not. It was just had incorrect information. Dates were wrong, locations were wrong, all of these things were incorrect. And that was not mentioned. And it was supported by the actual article that was written at that time by the governor's now policy director, Dave White, who up none since high school. And so the point is, and that was for the Birmingham News at the time. But the, the point is that I can see this building uh, into something that we don't need. We don't need a whole lot of controversy, um, number one. And this particular person had an agenda. He had his feelings hurt because I voted against the textbook because of the errors, even though my picture was in the textbook. So it was certainly not a personal thing. In fact, the entire board picture was in the textbook. And it was mentioned, it was talking about the advancement of women and minorities. And it was a really, you know, other than that, there's a lot of content that would have been very positive, but you cannot, in, in my opinion, vote for something that's wrong until they approved. If he had corrected it before our vote, it would have been approved. But that's the kind of thing I see planted all over the state trying to build into this. Um, I know that among those who served with whatever committee it was with archives, and it may have been the one appointed by the board to consider um, social studies and history. And I just think that with that six-year cycle, is there a commitment? Because of all the reasons you've already expressed, I don't need to fix, you know, repeat it. Is there another reason? I noticed in here, it says, um, NAIC is not published, um, a schedule for dating and what said, what they say preceding that in two, there's two thousand fourteen and two thousand twelve regarding history civics and geography and economics. I hope that's not the reason for the delay. I don't think it is. Um, cause I don't think we need to rely on NAIC. We actually had, according to Forbes, among the best standards for history and social studies, et cetera, um, in the country. And for that reason, it doesn't bother me that we're not addressing it. It does concern me that we're building to, uh, because all of the questions I'm asked from all sorts of people, when are you going to do this? I don't want this to build into something you shouldn't do. I think we need to, to be able to go into this discussion. And it, you know, it's always been difficult because, for example, in the courses of study that year, they had a list of names of people, several of them were not even in the country during the constitutional convention. And so, you know, there's some big gaps in their information. And that was, that just happens for human and it happens. But we can correct it before, I don't want us, again, to be railroaded into something. I don't want the legislature to um, intervene with another whatever act. You know, you give it whatever name they think they might come up with. Um, and I don't want them doing our job. So my biggest concern is the last part of it, that the board needs to take on this responsibility when it's appropriate, whether the code, our administrative code or the code of Alabama, of course, the law requires a specific cycle, certainly compliance with that is very important if we maintain, if we want to maintain integrity as far as even respecting what we put into our unadministrative code. And so from that standpoint, does it comply, and this is ultimately my question, does this restructuring comply with what is required of this board and of the state superintendent and the staff? And those given this responsibility, will we be in compliance if we rearrange the chairs on the deck in order to go along with whatever we think uh, needs to be done at the time? Because order is important, not only in the classroom, the, the, you know, from day one, if the teacher wants to command the classroom, you maintain order. If we're going to maintain our responsibility as a board, we need to do it. And we need to maintain whatever, not because it's always been done that way, but because there's, there are requirements and there's a real reason, and you gave some of those.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, be completely in compliance. This, this schedule doesn't put anything out of compliance. It's, and as you point out, the NAIC framework has not been updated in a long time for social studies. There's no schedule to update it again.
That's good.
So, so we're in complete, we're in full compliance. Yes.
Dr. Mackey, as a past member of the state social studies textbook committee and state textbook adoption committee, maybe we were the one of that.
I think you were that group. And that was a great group, but a lot of you were in.
We had a great many problems that we began to uncover.
You were in that group. Yes. Yes, they should have called you. No.
Joe Morton was overseeing the.
That's it. What year was that?
I am an old man. I don't, somewhere in the nineties or something, long. Been around long enough that she was on the board. I am.
I was a teenager.
I am concerned. You said social studies doesn't change. Well, science doesn't change, math doesn't change. And I assure you, cosmetology hasn't changed much. But I am very concerned, not just with compliance of the law, but with compliance with logical educational strategies of putting social studies off and not dealing with it and blaming it on COVID or blaming it on something else. I think that we had a schedule and we were dealt with social studies and textbook adoption is critical. Not just adoption of the, of the curriculum, but adoption of the textbooks. And I assure you, in our society, a lot has changed and. And I assure you, in our society, a lot has changed in 10 years in the way social studies is presented or history is presented. The Gulf War is new. The whole environment of the world we live in that the children, that our students should understand is dramatically different. And social sciences and history are made daily, and the interpretation with our technology is daily. And I think to put it off and ignore it and say, we didn't do it for COVID, so we don't deal with it again till 2026, which I probably won't be on the board by then, hopefully if I'm still alive, is not, in my sense, good conscience.
I agree.
I can't support that. I'm sorry.
I've got one small issue, as y'all know, I'm an economics person, and monetary policy has changed, right? The tools that our central bank is able to use have changed. And so, and we know that social studies has four strands, right? The standards have four strands. And so it's not just history, which you're right, some of the more recent historical events would not be included, but it's also geography, economics, and political science as well. So it's all of those. And, and I, so of course, I'm a little bit worried that we may be teaching our students the wrong.
Or not teaching them the.
Well, you're right. We're teaching them some things that are no longer done with economic policy and then not including some things that are done. But then a question, and this sort of relates to what everybody has said, the textbooks, if we're using the same textbooks as we approved, I haven't ever been on the board when we did social studies, so I'm not sure the last time it was approved, but when we did it, then, then do, those have got to be just ragged by now. So can they only, like, when we approve the textbooks, do we approve the edition so that the edition can't be updated? Because if I felt like that, that, like, if a certain company, I won't name a company, but if a company, and we approved that company, but they come out with new editions that now have, have updated monetary policy, then, then that, to me, is a good thing because they've updated it to what the reality is, and we're teaching it properly incorrectly. But if we're still having to use the edition that was approved, you know, 10 years ago, then that's out of date.
And we need to vet them because a lot of them, the new additions can be, I mean, we had, we had textbooks the last time that had more pop stars in there than they did, people from history, and I'm talking about all sorts of history. We had this, you know, the percentage was just ridiculous. But going back to what you said about economics and geography, I can remember going into an editor publisher in your area that used to be in my area, you know probably who I'm talking about, and in his office, he gave me a hard time about whatever. And I just said, you know, education is very important, and you might want to consider changing that map that you have hanging behind you. You had this huge map in his office. And he had so many incorrect country names and locations and changes that were so out of date. And it wasn't one of a, you know, you have pretty maps that are actually supposed to be different, it was not for that purpose. And he said, well, show me. And so this is someone who's an adult, but our children should be able to go to a globe.
Looked at home from 20 years ago.
Yeah, but there will be changes, and that's exactly where we are with this latest.
You're right, in economics, money has changed.
Question, just clarification, not necessarily about order, but about the subject matters that you're speaking about. Under our new textbook reform that was just passed, do, it's my understanding that our superintendents, principals, and our teachers can adopt updated materials in their subjects as supplemental. So if there's been some huge change in monetary policy and you're teaching that senior level economics in high school, you can pull in those new materials?
I can, yes, ma'am.
So, so it's not, I mean, in my mind, it's, it's not like we're just leaving them out there without options to be able to pull in new materials in geography and monetary policy.
Do we give them money for that? Would they get textbook columns?
They get.
If it's out of sequence?
Well, they get so much per year.
Per year.
It's a per child basis. They can spend it however they want. So, yeah, so when I was a local superintendent, we would, I mean, so let's say there was an adoption for new ELA books, then we might spend 75% of our state funds on new ELA books. But the other 25%, we would fill, we'd spend on what we call fillers, so buying additional science books or math books, or we have a big class, we need more art books. So they can, they can, right, they can buy from anything. Now, you asked another question. Y'all are asking questions while I can get answers. Let me get back to Dr. McCarty's quickly. So you adopt a particular book, not a publisher, and in addition to that, so yes, if there is a, for the state textbook list, if the Mackey Textbook Company published, you know, Alabama History: A New Life Today, and then we replace that four years later with Alabama History: A New Life Tomorrow, then that book is not approved by, even though it's the same publisher and 9% of the content may be the same, the board, that would have to go back through the cycle. Now, local districts can purchase that if they use a local textbook adoption committee that goes through that process, or they can purchase it if it's supplemental, if their main, their main book is off of the regular, the textbook list. But they say, you know what, we want to buy an updated book to supplement our regular book, they can buy supplemental material, but it's, but it can't be their primary material. So, yeah, there is a way for them to do that, many of them do that. They do buy updated materials, they buy online materials.
And what I was asking, Dr. Mackey, what would be the difficulty of us going on and doing social studies? Because he said we could do social studies instead of science. I guess the only thing I think about when you talk about districts that can get supplemental updated materials, that's good for those who have the monies to do that. But when you talk about continuity and everybody looking at the same area, I think that's where there sometimes becomes a problem, that even though I may go on and do science, even if I go on and do supplemental materials for social studies, even though we're adopting science that year, people saying that we really could look at, if you wanted to go ahead and keep on cycle, as you were saying, social studies, we could, and then the science. So, you know, just pleasure.
Yeah, and I do want to, we certainly could just swap social studies and science. Now, I've got Ms. Jones here, and she is our course of study person, and she has to leave soon, and she has another appointment. I'm glad she's still here for this conversation. I don't want to say there would not be any complications.
Right, when you say.
But I would.
I think the really big thing that, that we, in consideration for this schedule, was the real need for the career tech and the health sciences and the human services. Also ties into that science course of study. And so there, there are a lot of things that must go hand in hand there because some of the courses in the, in the human services or in the health sciences actually count for science credit.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, one moment, so we all can hear. I'm sorry, thank you.
Some of, some of the courses in career tech are evaluated and written in a way that they actually count for science credit. And so if that was to be written not in tandem with the science course of study, there might be issues there. And that also occurs with the human services as well.
Okay. She has an idea.
Yes.
Well, and when was the last time science was adopted? Are we putting it, are we, why would we replace, I mean?
Science is.
How long ago has it been that we have adopted? By switching it, are we doing the same thing?
No, we're not trying to switch. I just know it seemed as if a lot of people had passion about social studies, saying, why are we not doing that? So I asked him, what would be the difficulty in going on with that? And that's why he mentioned perhaps it could be done, but then Dr. Jones is saying it could perhaps cause, you know, conflict with what we need.
And, and so, you know, the schedule, there are a lot of things that go in the background with this schedule, but of course, you know, we understand that, that there are a lot of things that are important, it's just hard getting to all of them on the schedule that we want to get them.
What about the arts? Do those, at one point, the board sort of turned the arts education program over to the arts community, and so they've been actually pretty much doing it, I think. And so, anyway, which one of the board today?
I just remember the last time they presented it, it was phenomenal.
Oh, it was wonderful, but, and that's what I'm saying, it doesn't change that much, except it just is phenomenal. And of course, I love the arts, but the fact is that, is that one that we.
Well, we, I mean, there's, I mean, again, I'm not saying there wouldn't be any complications, but we could possibly do science next year, move up digital literacy and computer science, possibly. Again, I want to talk to all the people who have to do the work.
You need to.
And then do social studies, have to move social studies up a year, but not put you with two big core programs back to back. That's one of the complications because, again, very limited staff, and you're trying to do two, you try to do two huge adoptions back to back because, remember, each of the four core adoptions are then followed by a huge textbook adoption cycle. And it's the same staff handling all of it. And so what I don't want to do is set up and have, like, let's say we adopted science, or we adopted social studies, and then the next year, we're doing social studies textbooks, and we're doing science course of study. Because I can tell you, that, our staff can't do that. That's overwhelming to do, to be doing like science textbooks and social studies course of study at the same time. And that's why we, we put a year, a year in between the big core programs that are huge. So, so you could do, could, again, we don't have any of these special stint here, but if you did social studies in '23, and then digital literacy in '24, and science in '25, or science, leave it as it is, and try to move art education down, and move digital literacy up a year, which is what they've asked for, and which we moved social studies up a year. Realize that many states don't do this, they, most states are on a 15-year adoption cycle. So they don't adopt, they don't even try to adopt standards like this. They try to do it once in generations. Textbooks more often. So many states will adopt textbooks twice in one set of standards.
I'm concerned about textbooks, not standards.
And so that's just, but our, our procedure has always been textbooks follow, we adopt new set of standards followed by a new set of textbooks. I can tell you, when I talk to my colleagues in other states, they don't understand why we do that. Like, they do standards once in a generation, and then they adopt textbooks on a cycle.
Dr. Mackey, what does the law say?
It doesn't have.
Because I remember we got into that, Jason, with some of the wording of the law.
It doesn't have a cycle, though. Yeah, the cycle's not in there. It does say that there, there, one of the laws, I think it's the tech, the course of study one, says we have to have one every year. And we do have one every year, but it doesn't, but it's not the same one every year. They only serve one year, so if it goes over, they have to either be, oh, there comes Dr. Jones, Ms. Jones and Dr. Jones. But they work closely together. They, we, if a committee sometimes has to be reappointed, if it stretches out further, that was also a question on the social studies committee because they did not do that work. So if we can't, when we come back, we'd be the same committee, no, some of the same people could be on it, but they would have to be reappointed, we'd have to go through the appointment process again. We just have to do that annually. So remember these two ladies, they, we get them, I get their emails confused, I'm getting them confused. Kathy Jones is our math specialist, so they just have multiple jobs. She is our state math specialist and our course of study lead. So she has two full-time jobs. Sitting right behind her, Dr. Carolyn Jones, is our textbook, textbook coordinator. She leads all the work on the textbook. She's been processing those ELA textbook contracts most recently. They do all work together in instructional services. Sean Stevens leads that unit. We currently, unless this has changed, and just correct me because I can be wrong, don't have a social studies specialist. Nettie Carson Mullins, who had done that for a number of years, retired, and had to retire pretty sudden. So we didn't have any, like, any notice, like a week's notice that she was going out. And so we don't have her replaced yet. And we do have, our science specialist is Michael Robinson. So, so some of the areas we have, we try to have a specialist for each area, but like Kathy Jones, she is also in charge of all course of study adoption, in addition to being the math specialist. So she's not even, able to be a full-time math specialist, which would be ideal if we had a full-time person to work on each core subject. But anyway, just kind of explaining who they are and how the process works. And that's why I'm saying we just can't possibly do a huge, two huge adoptions at the same time. There's just not enough staff to do it. And enough rooms when we bring in the committees and all. But Dr. Jones is here, so we, you have textbook specific questions about the order. Again, our thing has always been we follow, we do an adoption of new standards, and we do an adoption of textbooks. If we did like many other states do and did an adoption of standards, didn't adopt new standards for a long time, but had two textbooks adoptions in between, we could do that, but now that's, I mean, I'm not, and I'm not opposed to that, but that's certainly having to rethink the chart. And I would want to bring in these ladies and their colleagues for a discussion about where they would see the pinch points in that, but I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to that. If we did that, ideally, these ladies, one of them might fall out, so somebody catch them, but like, we could, if you said, well, we don't, we, I'm not saying the board says this, but if the board said, well, okay, we're good with our social studies standards, I know you said that we want to, we don't want to update them, but if we said, well, we're good with them, but we need new textbooks, then we could do just a textbook adoption. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't want to do that with at least, at least looking at them to see if they need to be tweaked and update things like the financial policy. They might not have to take a whole rewrite just through a tweak, so, which the board has done before too historically at times. But the big, I mean, the big question is back to, we don't have to decide this today, but if you really want to, want to think about, would you like to try to swap science and social studies? That does mess up our science and our CTE. So we've been trying to get all the CTEs done, and it will throw us off. I would prefer that we look at keeping science and CTE on schedule. We will talk with Andy Meadows and his folks about if there's any problems with bumping art down, moving digital literacy up, and computer science, separating them, but, but doing them together, and then moving up social studies a year, and that would at least help. We could also swap digital literacy and social sciences, but again, the, the computer science people are pushing really hard to get it sooner, so.
And I do want to say that there's a lot of back planning, it takes a lot of research. And so these meetings are planned over a year in advance, and the people that are leading that work are, are doing ongoing research for, for things a year in advance. And so if it's going to be with a different section, you know, all these summer conferences, we try to dodge all of the special things, so it would need to be, we would need to make that decision very quickly, or it would mess up everybody's schedule, not just the, not just the ones that you're proposing to change.
But if we left science and CTE where it is right now, if we left it alone, those folks would be okay.
Yes. I actually have a planning meeting for dates tomorrow because we have to plan that that far in advance to, to, to avoid scheduling conflicts and to let those superintendents know the dates ahead of time that their, their personnel will be out doing that. We do, we try to be very respectful of the school districts and let them know well in advance because they are very gracious to allow these people to come help us write these standards. Thank you. Anyone else?
I think Cynthia was going to point out something with the digital, being a duplication where you have it within a very short period of time.
If we split it, couldn't we just?
Right, you could maybe, yeah, I would see it adjusting, if we are able to move it up, it's down there again.
Right.
And so that would change too.
Possibly, yeah, take that year out, right.
Then you put social studies up after you talk to Andy. Couldn't you put social studies up after you talked to Andy and company? Put it in place of arts education, as much as I love the arts, but it doesn't change as much.
Right.
It's just having, then we would have the science textbook adoption going on at the same time as the social studies course of study adoption. And that is two huge things during that year. I would really not like, like to not do that to our staff. I don't know that some of them would leave. That would be really hard to do two core back to back like that.
So what happens if the legislature comes along because there's this whisper thing that I'm hearing? And they plan to look at social studies and history and et cetera, and economics and geography next. And what if we end up with another, and we'll come up with whatever name. I don't know what they'll come up with this time after the numeracy act and the literacy act and the whatever act. And then we have to do it anyway because it's in the, in the law. And so if, if, if we don't do it, it may get done otherwise. And again, we have the, another, I mean, we should be the ones actually doing it and making those decisions and not waiting for them to tell us when and how and et cetera. And that's what they've been doing. And it's not, not just us, it's you, it's the department, it's everyone.
Dr. Mackey, you mentioned the fact that many states, most states do more frequent textbook adoptions. And if we do not move forward with social studies textbook adoptions, we're doing something that most states don't do. And that is adopting a regular and more frequent sequence. Is that correct? If I extrapolate to what you said, you said many states don't do one adoption as often as they do others.
That's right.
But the one thing they do more often is textbook adoption.
Correct.
And if we don't move forward with a textbook adoption, we're doing something, we're not doing something that most other, most other states do in a more regular basis, and that's textbook adoption. Is that a correct analysis?
Yes, that's accurate, yes.
So if you keep putting off textbook, or we, the board, I think, I think it's our decision. Do that. Even though you don't think social studies changes, I believe it does. We are doing something different than most other states do in not adopting textbooks in a more regular sequence. And I can tell you that, I was in that meeting and all the trouble.
You were, yes.
I was helping being a troublemaker. But there are myriad of social issues that we're dealing with at the board level. And I have every reason to believe that some of the predictions that Ms. Bell makes, if we don't do it, the legislature will be involved. And it always stresses on our staff, like the numeracy act, when you said you're not sure how we're going to react to it. I'm not sure how we're going to react to those either.
And Dr. Mackey, when was the day, well, when was the year that we last adopted social studies standards? Do you remember?
The textbooks.
Uh, the, the date on the, the document is 2010.
Okay.
So I was, I was just checking just for clarification. And these career tech courses were 2008. So it's, it's, I mean, it's, it is very difficult to make those decisions about, you know, how to do things. And so it's, it's extremely difficult.
Right, thank you.
So we need to really have a sense of urgency in adopting, putting social studies up earlier than what we have.
Absolutely.
Can you look, think about what has happened since 2010? Our kids deserve better. So we need to make the adjustments. We have two years. We can make the adjustments at the state level with your personnel in order to meet this need. Doesn't seem like a hard thing.
So, yeah, because the health science has been even longer than that. So, yeah. And you, and you're playing catch-up because for several years, there was, there was just, weren't many courses of study adopted for a number of years. And so we're, we're playing catch-up on all of these.
Maybe we can get Senator Ward to find some $92 million to help us with social studies.
Well, let's be proactive, rest down.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that's what I'm saying, proactive about it. Ask them and give us the money to do that.
But how did we do it all those years if we did it before and we were on, on schedule? I know sort of the answer to that question, but at the same time, and I know we're, we're having to deal with more mandates from outside, which we shouldn't have and we shouldn't in the future, hopefully. But that adds to the, the complicated situation, the complication as far as the schedule. And I do understand needing to be on schedule. And there are certain things that have, a lot of changes in CTE and stacking credentials and all of those things that are, you know, more national than they were before. But the, the point is that we have a responsibility. And if, I mean, this, this schedule is somewhat limited as far, as far as action. And we need to be proactive as a board instead of saying, giving excuses, you know, why we, anyway. I can't, you told me.
Well, and Dr. Mackey, I don't know if this would help alleviate any of the, the workload, but world languages is in there with social studies. And, and that might, if we've got social studies, world languages in a big component of CTE, perhaps the world languages could be taken out and put in a different cycle. Just as a, because I, I would agree that that probably hasn't changed as much.
Yeah, I would think if we moved up social studies, we would only do social studies.
Right, right.
Yeah, not move up, not move up the world languages and CTEP.
So, because both of those require instructional services staff. So yes, that would be. All right, so what do we say?
So, so, so I think, everybody, so science and health science is, I mean, we're already in the process. Even though the technically don't start till January, they're already in the process on that.
Right.
So we're, we're in the process of hiring a social studies person. And so what I hear is let's see if we can, now, please, let me talk to the staff to come back to you. But to see if we move just social studies, not world languages and the other CTE program, to where arts education is now.
Right.
And then move arts education and digital literacy down.
I would flip.
Possibly keep, possibly keep digital literacy where it is, but, and move arts down to where.
So that was world languages.
Or world languages.
And see if we can do that. So let me get with them and let's have, have a staff meeting and, and come back to you. But keep science on schedule since they're already working on it. Does that sound good to everybody? And we will make every effort to move the social studies up.
Is the domain of sequencing this solely yours or does it involve board approval?
Well, the sequence does, the board doesn't approve the sequence, no. Obviously.
So you can be by yourself without her involved?
But we can.
Could, but you're, but I mean, we want to, you're going to approve the courses of studies. So we want to, you know, we want you to be.
I want us to, I think we should be improving the sequence.
There's nothing that says we can't, except, and it is our responsibility.
Okay, cool.
All right. See, brilliant minds.
Yep, and you start doing these appointments in the fall for the, you know, for the science course study. So, okay, we're on.
All right. Thank you all, thank you.
They didn't definitely know.
Okay. Struggling readers, upper grades. Thank you.
So the great news is I'm your K three person. And I'm giving you the, the upper grades because Dr. Davis had to go to another appointment. So I will do the best I can to answer the questions that you're having. But I know she put together a document for you that has the red header across the top of it to kind of give you some overarching things that have been taking place with regard to the struggling readers beyond grade three. And that's the language enrichment for older students, which is the Leo's program. There is also two ongoing pilots, actually. We have the ability pilot that is targeted with our black belt schools. And then A plus best practices has a, has a contract with us where they are also working on a middle grade pilot. And then extended, expanded professional learning opportunities beyond third grade with an emphasis on dyslexia. ARI has been working to help support that and coming up with a plan so that K 12 can receive that support and training on dyslexia awareness. And we have a part-time person who will be able to be more flexible with regard to her role to be able to support schools who want that for their older students. Because we definitely want all of them. You'll also notice that on there is letters training. And that is something that we haven't had to restrict with regard to application. We have been able to allow those in upper grades to attend that because we know that it's the same problems with some of our students in the upper grades. The multi-sensory structured language education training affiliated with help training. We just sent out that memo this week. And so that is something that is very open to them. And at the CNI meetings this week, that was something that I touched on with all of our curriculum directors is that they have interventionists for special education teachers. Those are the ideal personnel for that training to be able to continue to support. Additionally, Dr. Davis sent you this. I think she sent it to you in hard copy and electronic that was put out from What Works Clearing House. And she has been diving through this.
We didn't, I didn't get a hard copy.
That was at the last board meeting? Okay. Okay. We'll see if we can work on getting that if we drop the electronic. And she is working through digging this and coming up with some supports for the schools so that they will have, it's all about providing reading intervention for students in four through nine. It's got some great, very simple charts in it to help guide teachers with scheduling and such. So I think this is going to be a great component when she takes this gigantic book and she's able to merge it down to something that our schools can actually, you know, take because they've got a lot on their plates right now. Are there any questions that you have for me?
I have two questions, surprise, a question. One has to do with what you mentioned about the contracts. Now, first of all, the, one to precede this with the question about who is guiding this? Is it the state department or is it the literacy group out of the governor's office? I noticed you've had these, this information on the first page where it's, it has the, anyway. It has some background that goes back to submissions in the governor's office and.
And point me specifically to where you're talking, are you talking about the ability pilot?
Yes, I guess so, yes. And then the other question I have goes back to what I previously said about the contract you mentioned. A plus is that from our department?
That is an A plus contract with the State Department of Education.
And then the other contract is one that I happen to see on the contract review committee's list having to do with Nye House and some other information about Nye House. And I know that this, this dyslexia group and other have expressed that they prefer one over the other. And even those who have attended one prefer that one versus Mississippi, Nye House. And I know in Mississippi, they didn't contract, at least in the last couple of months, they have not contracted with Nye House, even though it's located in Mississippi, as you know. So is there, is that our contract with Nye House?
I would say that when you're talking about letters and Nye House, you're talking about two different things.
I realize.
Letters is a two-year program that teachers are going through that is ongoing. It's intended to be where you're focused on a specific area that is quarterly. And so when you have that two-year, we don't have anything that has come our way that has that degree of knowledge. And in turn, we're seeing a higher growth in that. So that is actual, you know, absolutely something that we are pushing and encouraging for our schools to be able to have that. But you also, and I know that when I talked to y'all earlier, you have certain situations where they're not ready to dive into a two-year program at this point. It's all situational. Sometimes you have a brand-new teacher who's entered into a school and they're trying to learn how to be the teacher of that school. And so giving them a bite-sized piece right now, something that's a smaller piece, is beneficial at the moment. And so professional learning is ongoing. We want them to continue and we do want them to pick up that letters that we know is great. But sometimes giving them something that is a smaller piece right now, a training, is beneficial. So Leah, with Leo, you're looking at a smaller time period. It's a 30-hour professional development session. Can't be compared to what we're given for letters. But it is an ability for us to give them a training of about a week, a week long. And then there is some follow-up that goes with that, some coaching that goes with that. And so we have some systems in schools right now that are willing and ready to go into that smaller set of training that's going to take them less time at this moment before they start digging in. Whereas you have others that individually are going right for the two-year training. So we're trying to meet the needs of everybody and the uniquenesses of the individuals that are trying to get, get learning taking place.
And the other one you explained is an outside contract. And what do they do?
Okay, so both of these are, both of these are middle grade pilots. One of them, the A plus best practices, is led by Ms. Kathy Gassenheimer. They're working on looking at profiles of middle school students, professional development to support those schools and building structures that could sustain and carry on to other schools. When we're looking at the governor's ability pilot, that is money that was allocated by the governor. And it is the black belt, that's your ability pilot that we're talking about. And it is involving many more schools. And it is really looking at the ability of sustaining coaching in those schools where you can have that peer coaching model that helps to support ongoing learning in their buildings.
Ms. Short.
Okay.
Kristina. So it appears that the Leo program or project began last summer in 2021. And that we had approximately 62 teachers to go through it. And after they did the pre and post assessment, they showed 12% increase of their knowledge on the science of reading. And so this would have been for those teachers in grades four through eight. So we know that the ACAP is being given now, you know, different districts started last month. So if we were, by the time those results come back, sometimes this summer, perhaps to pull some of those teachers that went through this training process, since they did increase their knowledge base by 12%, we perhaps could see the effectiveness of that training on perhaps how their students did. I'm just asking a question because I'm trying to see if we are saying these strategies are out there, how are we going to be able to measure their effectiveness? That's the first one.
I think yours isn't as much a question of effectiveness, but a follow-up step for us.
Well.
And so I think that is definitely a great idea to be looking at.
Okay. Well, it is a question of effectiveness because twofold. They have been effective in increasing their knowledge base by 12%. But then I want to see how effective their knowledge base has been on their students.
We're the transfer.
Yes.
Which is really where we want to be. We want to be at the transfer level.
Right. Okay, and then secondly, the ability project with the black belt. Now, it appears, and I'm not sure, on the third page, that perhaps the implementation began October 2021, where they started going through the process of learning, I guess, these strategies. And I see one of my districts, and I circled it, in line with what they're going through there. However, it looks like they're still going to be going through, well, from November to December, there was planning. I guess, coaches and all. They haven't gotten that much training yet. It appears that most of their training is going to be from January to May 2022. Is that correct?
We've had several districts that have had training. Some of this has been, um, some planning efforts that Dr. Byrd, I believe, is the one that is working with. I'm sorry, Dr. Blair is working with them to come up with some of the plans that are going with this. Rita Betts, who you know is no longer with us, she was the one who was originally working with Dr. Blair. And so we've had a bit of a transition with regard to catching up and knowing what, what all is going on with this.
So on this one, then, we perhaps can then just see the planning stages, like with the district that I see. So we'll know what we'll. So we'll know what we'll be implementing for the school year in the fall. Is that...
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps, okay.
Are there any systems here that are not participating currently?
We have some systems that are not as... I wouldn't say they're not participating, but they may not be attending quite as much as they should be. And that's been something that we've been working on with regard to the professional development.
What is that really not participating with respect to the...
So...
You said standards for participation?
So an offering was made of professional development, scheduled, signed up. Certain individuals did not attend. It wasn't necessarily a system thing. It was more of an individual thing, and so making sure that they've got those opportunities to have that training because it's important, that they've got the knowledge to carry on with what is taking place.
So what's the plan to make sure that the schools that may or may not be on point right now receive what they're supposed to?
They've been provided an additional opportunity for the training that's coming up again this summer to ensure that they do it, and then follow-up steps. The individuals that are involved in that followed up with leadership to make sure that leadership was aware that these were taking place so that we can look forward, making sure we've got the right kind of involvement in that.
Do you have an idea why they're not involved?
I could not answer that for you at this time. I do think, you know, the nature and what we're in right now is difficult, but I think sometimes that's an easy thing to say as the reason why. And so I want to make sure we've got the opportunity to do it. That's got to be the key, is that we can say why we didn't do it, but let's steer and let's go and let's get it done.
So this training basically takes place during the school day, so they have to have subs in order to...
So they're providing the additional training this summer.
Okay, so that may be why. You know, if you have school systems that are challenged with obtaining subs, that could be...
And we know that's been a hardship.
I got...
Oh, yes, yeah, no, no. Okay, okay.
I didn't say...
No, well, and this is to Dr. Chestnut's point. When we did, and correct me if I'm wrong, but especially those of y'all who... It seems like to me with AMSTI and with ARI, in years past, probably before the Great Recession, I think we made, well, I mean, I'm just saying, before the budgets were slashed and things changed, but I believe we gave stipends to teachers that went in the summer, right? That was part of... It was because when you're paying for childcare and you're paying for transportation, everything else, and then asking them to come to mandatory training, so... And again, that would be a budget request item. I realize we don't have funds just sitting around. But maybe in the future, if we want to attract stronger participation, go back to that idea of providing stipends for those who complete the training. And so that's just a thought that might increase participation, and I'm thinking more in the summer. And that would save on school systems not having to get a sub and pay for a sub and all those sorts of issues. And then another question I have is, and it goes back to, I'm not sure if it was you. I can't remember now who said it, but, no, Dr. Richardson, I think it was you, the data analytics. And Brandon, it goes to something you said earlier, return on investment, data analytics, research. So are we doing everything we can to vet these programs before we begin implementing them? And then once we do vet them and get the research? Because I have to say, I was a little disappointed that they only increased their knowledge by 12%. I was actually looking, you know, I'm reading along, I'm looking, and I'm like, 12%? You know, I thought they would have active participants in something, and this is assuming that they came in without knowing a lot, which is why they were there, to improve themselves. I was a little disappointed that it was just 12%. And like you said, we have very scarce resources, so we have to make sure that we use those resources as effectively and efficiently as possible. And so we, in my opinion, should be using that research and data analytics and that whole idea of return on investment as we investigate these programs. And so did we call on all our groups, you know, that are experts, our Literacy Task Force, our DAC, Dyslexia Advisory Council, there's a committee for grade-level reading, all these people? Did they review the components of these different PDs? Did they look at this? And we have a call on staff now. So did we bring in her expertise and get her to critique these before we went further in the whole RFP and contract process?
Now, the work that we do with the Dyslexia Advisory Council and Literacy Task Force, you know, it's generally consultative, so to speak, as they all have their other positions. And so when we're talking about the research and stuff, yes, our uncalled that we have. Absolutely. She's one of the ones who is working hard to make sure we're looking at these different pieces. If you look at the legislative report that ARI sent out, that was one of those aspects. You can see the difference between our letters and our Nye House. But you also have to take into consideration the length of the programming and how much time it's taking up for somebody with regard to the growth. So while the growth is not as high as the letters, it took place over a week's time. And so, you know, it's a piece of it. But yes, the Dyslexia Advisory Council and the Literacy Task Force are great resources for us to use. I know that I've heard comments based on the interactions that I've had with them about Nye House. It is definitely not their preferred course. They definitely prefer letters over it. And I understand, due to the growth report that we have, why they appreciate the letters. But also, as we worked on, you know, other aspects with continuous development, conversation about timelines has come up amongst some of the participants.
Well, I just want the best, right? And to research and get the data on the very best that's out there, and then pour our resources into offering the best that we can.
And what you're speaking of is to the heart of what I want to. I want to make sure that we can easily get the data that we need that's taking place. Brandon and I were actually talking this morning about a particular piece that has to do with data and finances, and we want this to be something that is as supportive as possible to getting the information quickly and making good informed decisions for our teachers that are also the children.
Well, and one other issue is, I planned to go, I looked at when the dates are. So I plan to sit in on some of these sessions this summer with Nye House that are offered at Jackson State. But what is, are they, I suppose, is the letters training well-aligned with the training they would get from this LEOS program? Because if you have letters-trained teachers in K through three, then the students go to fourth grade and they have a LEOS, Nye House-trained teacher. Is that going to be disjointed?
We have researched with several participants who have had both and have seen a benefit in both because they are offering a different... While the philosophy is the same, they're offering a different vantage point.
So tell me, this may be the silliest question ever to ask.
I'm sure it's not.
No, it probably is, but I keep sitting here thinking, is Power School giving us information in real time for these trained teachers so that they can see where the deficits are in these upper grades?
So leveraging Power School has been a really concentrated conversation that I've been having with Stacy Royster as of late. A lot of it having to do with the S-RIPS, the portfolio, and recording, the comprehensive recording that we have our schools doing. She's been fantastic to be able to try to get together opportunities where we can dig in further to that information. We have had conversations with Sandy Ledwell because we know things that are impacting me with the Literacy Act are also going to impact her with the Memoracy Act. We had Charles Stringham, who is with Technology, involved in some of the conversations with that, and Dr. Pope briefly. So we're working on trying to find, but at the same time, we don't just want to push out something. We want to make sure that what we're looking to use is really going to work.
My question is very 30,000 feet global. I mean, I was so hoping that Power School would give us, give all of our districts sort of this equal, we can see them all at once and where we needed to really be working. And so I just wondered if it's integrated, if we're thinking about Power School and using it correctly as we do this work.
I think they're still working on attendance right now, but no. I say that in jest because it is hard whenever you're switching to a program to learn all the ins and outs that are going on with the attendance and entering your grades and making sure that you have all of those registration components in there and active.
But I...
But then also the recording, we had Performance Analytics, which is a piece that is a dashboard that helps us to see what's going on. And that is a piece that Marcus Vandiver has been looking at along with Stacy to see from a training perspective, involving Joe Goble, who's the Ed Technology, about how can we make sure that our schools are utilizing this to its capacity? Because right now, it hasn't been utilized to its capacity.
And I think I can add a little bit today.
Because when we really bought into Power School, it was because the teachers could see in real time in the classroom where each student might be struggling.
Right. And Stacy, my conversations with her was Stacy Royster. She says it takes probably the third year for teachers to really be able to use the data piece. And that's what she's seeing because Opalica, of course, was in the first-year pilot, that they, these things that Ms. Short's talking about, they have to... The teachers internalize it to be able to get to the point where they're really utilizing it like you want, it takes some time to build because it's such a big system. Technology changes all the time, and we're actually have some meetings with Power School next week because they've enhanced what they can do. So we're looking at possibly being able to put the S-RIPS, those individual reading plans, the portfolios, all of that into Power School. I didn't mean we had to adjust our contract and add to it, but I mean, we're going to have the meetings next week and see, but I would think what we're probably going to do is move forward with going even deeper into that, give teachers more material. So it's just this year being the first year, probably teachers are not using the data analytics part like they should. But is it there? Yes. And will they be able to? And absolutely, and we'll be able to. We'll be able to see things about school districts and look at, you know, even down to what, like, core program they adopt versus how their students are performing to the sub scores on test. We've never been able to do that before. Now, what we're hoping, you know, it's hard to do that for 1,700 schools, so that each district will do that training and each principal, Ms. Martin's over there shaking her head. That's what we want, is each principal to be looking at those numbers for their school and making instructional decisions. We'll be able to see it on the macro level, and the real red flags will pop up where we'll know where we need to go in and do intentional work. But that piece is still building. I know that's hard to, but it's there. But are teachers using it this year in that way? Probably not. Because, one, they don't have, you know, we only have the one-year test data, and we don't even have the second verification year to have a true foundational database. We do have the formative data, formative assessment data, but it's coming.
Dr. Mackey, just to add a little more to what Dr. Mackey indicated. I had a conversation with Dr. Marcus Vandiver, who is leading that work with Power School Analytics. I was really pleased to see the district usage of analytics. There's a lot of information that can be shared as far as at-risk indicators when you're talking about attendance, some of their assessment data from the last five years. It's actually sitting there. Our next steps now are to roll it out to the teacher level because we think that the information is, I'm creating conversations at the district and may not be going down to the teachers at this point. So he and I just, last week, discussed a plan that we can start with Mega. Paul Bonner is sitting there. He works with Dr. Vandiver to create some additional training opportunities so that the teachers can know this is actually there. Your login will get you to this, and it will give you those percentages that you can drill down and see Angela and know exactly what's going on with her, whether she's really chronically absent. What do we need to do as next steps for them? That data is there. He pulled a usage report and sent it to me. A lot of districts, you have some, there are a lot of people hitting it and going there looking. You have some that have not made it there yet. So that's where Stacy is really coming in with us, and she can give more hands-on support to those districts. Because we do realize, due to COVID, we have pushed a lot towards them, and we want to make certain that we're massaging that and giving them that extra care. I was shocked to see some upgrades that had been done with Power School because we know that's technology and it's constantly growing. So they added some additional platforms within there that will expand this even further. And of course, when you expand, it means more money. And we're looking at that. That's part of those conversations to see how we can make certain we're creating data dashboards to give them what they need in order to address the needs that are sitting in front of our teachers. We don't want them, we want a single sign-on that they're able to get there and go to everything that they need and not say, let me log on right here and see this. Let me log on over here and see that. We're looking at single sign-on opportunities that give them everything they need to address kids. So is it being used analytics? Yes. Is it being used to the capacity? No. And we are creating plans of opportunities to make certain that they know what's available. And it is a lot on there. They're really having, they're dealing with children sitting in front of them and then other things that are going on and saying, what else are they pushing towards now? But I can say this, I am very pleased. Bonnie called out a lot of names. And when she called out these names, she said Mr. Goble, she said Dr. Vandiver. She's talking about Sandy. What it shows me is that MTSS is working because it's having our sections to talk about what we need to do for our children. And those opportunities are there, and we're taking advantage of all of them. So yes, they're using it, but not to the capacity that we want them to.
Well, I'm just most excited that we have a student information system that's standard statewide, that there are no districts that don't have the opportunity for data.
Exactly.
And so now I'm thinking, I just really feel for my small rural districts that I know this is overwhelming when you only have a few people in central office and no trainer.
And those are those ones that we are creating different lists when we see some strugglers or we see that there's not a lot of activity. Stacy just emailed me a list Monday, and what do you want me to do, Angela? I said, oh, that's not that many. Can you just personally, before we involve anybody else, can we just personally call that tech coordinator and see what are they struggling with? So those are the types of opportunities that's, when Stacy gives that little tap on my door, what do we need to do? So we're actually making those personal phone calls to those districts to see what can we do to make this tool more effective for them.
And she's giving regular office hour sessions to the districts. So if you have any districts that are wanting support, she sends out regular information. She's been really amazing to be able to provide them. I don't know how she's doing it.
Bonnie, both you and Stacy Royster were very, very helpful and supportive. I had a group that, you know, physically we met, and you were very supportive. And Stacy was very supportive, and there were some obstacles in the reporting of data and with the S-RIPS and with some other reports. And she was like, let's see how we can put this in Power School. Let's see how we can make the whole process of sending in the mandatory reports as streamlined and as obstacle-free as possible. So it's, we're not there yet. So it's, it's, we, we, we're not there yet.
Right. And that's the meetings that's next week. I'm sorry to interrupt you. But that's the meetings that we're starting on next week as a result of those conversations. We've done tier one meeting on that and we're moving forward to see what else we need to do and what type of changes we may need to make. Because anytime we go into, we have a common student information system that we're using statewide. So when we start changing that from the design, those are change orders. So now we have to start that process of what does that look like? How do we mock that up to get the data? How do we go and make certain this replicating the ODS and the enterprise? So there are a lot of steps that we take it through in order to make certain that we're going to end up with the results that we need.
But being so willing to listen and to meet and to knock down unnecessary obstacles, that was very, very refreshing.
We've been working on this for a long time. When the portfolio came out, it's very long. There's a lot of information that they're doing. It's important information that they're gathering for their students. But anything that we can do to simplify that for them, that's what my job is. We're supporting this, this structure. I'm giddy about it, I'm not going to lie. This structure has the possibility of meeting all of the requirements and requests of the literacy task force while also simplifying our teachers' lives. And that's got to be the, the end goal because then they can be the kids.
Dr. Reynolds?
I'd like to reference on the page with the red top item two, where you had sixty-two teachers that you gave a pre and post-test to. And you had a twelve percent increase in knowledge. How much variance was there among those sixty-two people? Because the average is twelve.
How much what was there?
Variance between the achievement levels of those sixty-two individuals. Because twelve percent, in my perception, analytically, doesn't seem like as much increased knowledge as I would have hoped if the program is intense. So did some achieve, or increase by seventy percent and some by one?
I don't have that information with me, but I'll have it for the board questions.
And the pre and post-test, I assume it was the same instrument used twice, right?
It's, it's put out by the company, I believe.
I know they use the same instrument. Same instrument, pre and post. And based on that analysis, we're trying to infer the value or applicability of Leo's program based on those sixty-two people. How do you look at that and interpret that as an effective mechanism to spend our money on? That's a question.
Based on the research that the, the program has, that they've put forth through the decision-making with regard to having Leo's as a part. All of this took place before I was even a state department member. So I don't have all the background knowledge that comes with the decision of the Leo's. However, I do think when we look at the, the increase for the short amount of time and then we talk about the, the coaching.
Short amount of time was thirty hours instruction.
Yes, yes, sir. That, you know, we felt like that it was continuing to support our, our districts and where their needs were. If there are other programs that y'all hear about, I've been doing some research with the Lassinger Center to see some things that they have coming out out of Florida. We are very open to hearing ideas of, of programs that you hear about that may be effective. But for right now, as far as the timeline for this, this has been the best thing that we've found.
You think it's good?
I have not participated in it.
Based on the data output, you think it's good?
Based on the feedback that I've gotten from teachers who have taken both of them, I've heard good things.
Based on the number, twelve percent increase in knowledge from a pre and post-test and the thirty-hour instruction, you think that's?
My goal is always going to be to move, move forward.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Just as a follow-up to that, I guess it also, is there a way to measure where they are? If they're brilliant and they're way up there and they know everything, then twelve percent may be, you know, a pretty big, you know, percentage as far as the, hey, they learned a lot, but they already knew a lot. Is there a way to find out?
I'm going to dig and see what I can find out for you.
And then those who didn't have prior knowledge, twelve percent is good.
That's right. Depending on.
And that's what we need to know.
The pre and post.
That's right. I think so.
Data can be skewed any way you want. It can be skewed in the right way. We want to know the specifics with it. That's right, that's right.
Could you say last on your part?
Yes, they're at Florida, University of Florida. And they're affiliated with Florida's implementation programs. They really have two main hubs that help support their programming. It was actually recommended to me through one of my coaches that I have to support the consultation with other state entities. And I could be happy to send you some information that I've gotten from them.
And does letters, I can remember Dr. Davis sitting right there and saying, letters is the gold standard. Do they have a program? I know that many of our teachers are enrolling in the elementary ed program for letters, the two-year program. Do they have any other programs for older students?
So they have.
Or teachers of older students, I should say.
The programs that they have right now, I don't know that, that it's, that it's pinpointed as older students per se. We have talked to them and in regard to the two-year program with regard to some of the turnover we have in our schools to see if they have something that would be comparable to letters, but on a smaller scale. And at this time, they didn't have anything that they could give us. Their company does offer a lot of podcasts that are one-day type things to help with knowledge. And when they see certain ones of those, sometimes those are referenced on our Facebook page. A lot of times there's a science of reading group and members of the Dyslexia Advisory Council are leading that charge. And so sometimes those podcasts will be on there as well. And sometimes we snag what they have and we put it on ours, working together and teaching them.
We had a few years ago, I believe, we, we had some to go through letters, some educators in the state of Alabama to go through letters facilitator training. How, how have we, how have we gained from that? I mean, I, I, obviously they gained personally from it, but now are we using those people that are trained to go out and do letters training sessions?
We're looking at that sustaining us on down the road with regard to that facilitator training. We had a, a district that wanted more people than what letters would allow in a typical training on the scenario. And of course, they weren't face-to-face at the time. So what they did is they took one of those certified trainers to be in-house to help with the interaction that was taking place while the, the national letters training was there on, on site. We've also been using that information to support the coaching efforts that are taking place with the regionals. But one of the things that I've tried to initiate doing since my arrival is involving the universities in that. And we've said, any university professors that are interested, we'd be happy to help you in the facilitator training modules if that's something you want to carry on to your students.
I think like JSU, when they decided they were going to do it, they decided in the spring they were going to start doing it that next fall. They did some sort of intensive. So they packed what is a two-year training into a summer. And so for these, I think we said, you know, the, the idea, we want to shorten it so that it's not over two years. Could that be possible for our teachers?
What I am continued to, to be told by letters is that it's intended to be a two-year process. And I struggle with going outside that for fear that we're not going to get what we really want.
Well, and that's just a question. If, if it's that they want to do it faster, then maybe, you know, anyway, I was just tossing it out as a possibility. But if that's not, not been shown to work well, then I'm fine.
I don't have any data to say it doesn't work well. I just know that I keep being told. It's intended to be a two-year process, ideally quarterly. We don't want everybody taking all of it at one time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. More questions?
I'll start if I may.
Yes.
I know, is it all right, Wayne? I know you had a couple of, I'm going to jump in.
I'm always the first.
You are so nice. I know this year we're supposed to be implementing the approved core reading program. Okay, so we did that and all that. Are there any consequences if they're not adopting it, if they're not implementing it? And I know like we've talked about if they use the money for a program, they would have to go outside of a funding source, their own funding source to buy something that might not have been on the approved core program. But if they, but if they're not meeting what is in the law, what are, you know, what are the consequences? You know, because the whole reason we did, the law is the law. I mean, we've discussed this, you know, right and left. That whether you agree with the law, there's goodness in it, there's not so much greatness, but it's the law. So I was just wondering what will happen.
So districts for next fall who don't, if they don't use one of the two literacy task force approved, which, you know, there's been some controversy on some of that. Well, there's not, I mean, there's not a punitive thing. We've made it very clear. I mean, I, we've been extremely direct that to be in compliance with the law, they have to use one of those two. We do have some districts that have questioned, I don't know if they've moved forward yet, said they're going to do, they're doing their own thing. What I have cautioned them is that they are, as we read it, they're outside of the Literacy Act. That if a parent comes back, and I'm saying this, I've said this to them, you know, if a parent comes back a few years from now and a child is retained and their parent may bring legal action, may not. But if they bring legal action saying that my child's not had an opportunity to get, you know, to get the instructional value because, I mean, they could do that for a lot of reasons. But one of them could be because they're not using one of those two approved programs. I don't know. I mean, the parent may prevail, they may not. I can't, can't say that they would. So what I've told those superintendents, and we've only had three that have talked to me about that. And they have actually, I should correct that, only one actually called me directly, three that have inquired, is that they better be prepared. If they're, you know, the most recent one said, we can show that we are meeting all the requirements of the literacy task force because they're using two programs. So that's one of the things with the literacy task force that they were charged with. And I, I think this was the right charge, I felt very strongly about this, that when they approved a program, we had to know that if a teacher came in and picked up that program and all he or she did was teach that program, that they were meeting all the components of the science of reading. Some programs met all but one. And so some districts have said, well, we want to use this one and we will use a supplemental material to make sure we teach all of them. Now, I think, I'm not a lawyer and Jason gets nervous when I try to practice law. But I mean, I think that's one way they cover themselves. They have to show that they have met all the components of the law. But if they don't, they're technically, I mean, if they don't adopt one of those two, they're technically not, not in compliance. And, and many, many districts have told us they have a concern about one of those two. And the other one, they have not, they, they want to wait and see if that material gets updated next year. Because they're talking about it being updated. So they're telling me that they'll just put it off. Again, it's very few that have talked to me directly, but I think there are more conversations out there. I think most districts are adopting one of the two. But, but some are not. But there's not a, there's not a callback procedure like where they don't get their reading coach if they don't implement it or something like that. It's not in the law. So I think the short answer to your question is there's not a, there's not a punitive piece.
But you don't know what could happen.
But you don't know what could happen. And we are being very clear about that, that compliance is compliance is compliance. And we'll soon have the same, similar thing. You know, you worked on the assessments task force and we'll, we'll be rolling out those new assessments. And if they don't use one of those.
There we go again.
You know, they're, they're out of compliance. We're, I'm just being very clear with superintendents that compliance is compliance. But the law does not have a callback procedure or something like that.
All right, then my second question is, is that with the numeracy law, that there is the Director of Office of Math and Proof. So in the law, and I have to state, I haven't, as I told everybody, I read the literacy law all the time and every time I read it, something else pops up that I swear I, you know, never saw before. So I'm not a, I have not really studied the numeracy. But I'm sure that knowing that they sort of, we talked about utilize the literacy almost like a little bit of a template to sort of have a commonality. What are the qualifications in that law to determine who will be in the Office of Math and Proof?
I mean, of math improvement, sorry.
They're in the law. We posted that job. We, and we sent y'all the posting. We'll send it again and the qualifications are in.
Are in.
We took those. So, so just to follow up a little deeper on that. We posted that. I've talked to people in multiple states about it. So we were asked, we have a little bit of a conundrum on the timeline because the law has a lot of ninety-day requirements. So it's supposed to hire a director within ninety days, but also set up the whole office within ninety days. It was about twenty people. We've already started the work with state personnel to get that done. And convened the, the task force, I almost said literacy, the numeracy task force within ninety days. There are all these things that had to be done in ninety days. But I've spoken with both sponsors, Senator Orr and Representative Baker. And because we, you know, we were moving really fast and they wanted us to slow down. And I said, well, if we slow down, we're not going to meet all these requirements by July the fifth. And they both said they would rather we slow down, do a broad national search and take our time to find a person. So let's say we hire somebody from Maine, then that person naturally. Yeah, from Maine or Ohio or wherever. I mean, so we, we've posted it. We're going to leave it posted for, we, we don't have a certain time, but for, I would think we want thirty days to get it circulated out there. Then you've got to set up interviews. Certainly, we're going to consider people in, inside Alabama too. Then if you hire somebody, they, assuming they have a job somewhere else, they're not going to be able to start the next day. So, so this, doing this national search is going to push probably the hiring of a person past the ninety-day window. They're aware of that. We are going, we're working on two fronts. Mr. Markham has already sent out to all the, the different groups, like the School Board Association and all, who have appointees to the task force to get our appointees up. We already started yesterday, they started rolling in. So we're getting those appointees together. We will convene the task force before we get a director. I'll convene the task force myself. So we'll be in compliance with the law. Now, we won't start, as you know, the literacy task force work. We won't start the long, grueling work of the work until we get a director. But we'll convene the task force, give them their charge, talk about the work that's going forward and those kind of things within the ninety days, which is around the fifth day of July. In fact, my anticipation is we will do that before school gets out. Our plan is to convene them before the end of May because once people start moving, you know, it's, it's hard to get folks together in June.
And can we have a board representative?
Oh, wait, is that in?
Oh, no, okay. Well, that forgets we will.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be, yeah, so we've got to get that done. We've got to get all these in. And that will be, you know, hopefully, hopefully we can meet by the end of May. Probably will be like a Zoom meeting just to get to know everybody, everybody introduce themselves. We might try to pull everybody together, but again, May is really hard to get people to calm down. June's even more difficult. So if nothing else, we'll do a, a virtual. We are doing the search. Have talked to, you know, math people in multiple states. The, I mean, pretty much the job description is laid out in the law, all the things that they'll be responsible for. You know, ideally, we'll, you know, we'll work through, they've got to supervise this office. They will be located here in Montgomery.
Would be, what is their, what is, what is the numeracy ask that they have for their qualifiers? And that's what you said was in the.
Well, it's in there. So they have to have experience as, I'm going to try to do this from memory. Have this, Dr. Have Miss Dr. Ledwell in here now. They have to have taught elementary math or been an elementary math specialist. Experience, experience as an administrator. Yeah, so...
Gotcha.
But can you put that in your midweek report?
We did, yes.
Yeah, you can go and see the job.
We've sent it out, and, and we've sent it out as, and I would say forward it to anybody who can. Kathy Johnson was here earlier, is sharing it with the National Council of Supervisors of Mathematics. We're trying, they don't really have a job posting site, but we're trying to use them to help get it out. We have multiple, you know, networks of people trying to get, to get it out around the country. I've had, I've already had inquiries from, probably not many, but like four inquiries from the Midwest. And of course, people within the state. And we may have people right here. But we're, we'll do that time, that'll take time.
Dr. Mackey, are you concerned? I mean, this is pretty strict. It's like have experienced administrative duties, elementary mathematics specialist or coach, and teaching math in a public elementary school. I mean, that, that's, is that going to restrict? I mean, you've got to hit all three to be qualified. Is that going to be difficult?
Every...
Not to restrict all three.
Why, I take it, oh, yes, they do.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it is, it is gonna restrict.
Which one of those board members qualifies?
But, no, no, this is for the director. I mean, we probably, we have, we have six people in this building today that meet all the qualifications.
Okay, so it's...
So there are people out there that meet the qualifications. The, you know, finding the right person, of course, the right, we, I mean, ideally, you know, that ideal person out there would have been a great math teacher, that had been an elementary school principal, that had even been a superintendent, so they understand how the whole thing works together. They would have worked on lots of task forces, that have coached some other people. Now, whether that, that magical person who's done everything everywhere exists, I don't know. But, you know...
And Dr. Mackey, will it be in position, will they be required to come to work in Montgomery every day?
Yeah, this, this person's gonna have to be in Montgomery. Now, there's some regional, there are regional jobs in there. We'll have 15 regional specialists. There'll be one in each regional in-service center. And three, that'll be, they're not really floating, but they'll go to the regional in-service centers that have the most needy schools. So we'll double up in those districts, and we'll have a coordinator of those regional folks. Those regional folks won't necessarily have to live here. I mean, that, that wouldn't make sense. We want them and they live in regional in-service centers. The, the math director's gonna have to be in, in this building on a daily basis, just like Bonnie is, like Sandy is. Because it's just, you know, you want, we want to move more to the modern world where people can work remotely and all that. But, but this is so much work to be done in, in a short amount of time relatively, that we've got to be able to, you know, be hands-on, eye-to-eye a lot. And of course, we, it's the whole department, the whole section office is about, we've, we've panned it out and worked with personnel, but it's gonna be about 20 people, including the regional people. No, so we won't have to, they won't all have an office here. But, you know, I'm already thinking about it. So we're gonna have principal coaches. We're looking for probably three principals to be principal coaches. And I'm already been talking to Vic about, well, who might be good math principal coaches out there? But I'm trying to, and we may end up hiring some of the office staff before we even get a director. Because if we can grab good people who are looking for a job, you know, like they're, they're looking to move, we have to grab them while we can. But obviously, you don't want to do all the staffing until you get a director in. That's their job. It's a lot to do in a short time. The good thing is that the, the coaches themselves, the school coaches, don't get deployed until the fall of '23. And there won't be, in the first year, it's, you know, there'll be a limited number of them. So now, that doesn't mean we'll be hiring them in the fall of '23. Ideally, they would be hired next spring, around this time at least, so they can do all the summer training and then be ready to roll into the fall. And then it would start being a regular, you know, regular, every year you'd implement new ones for six years, I think.
One, two requests. I know that the organizational chart we got this morning was more on the administrative finance side. But when we get the overall for chart, can we go ahead and have that person in a position?
Yeah, we'll put that in there, absolutely.
Just so that we don't have to go back and update, you know, two months later?
Yeah, we'll do that. That's a very good point, yep, absolutely.
And then one other question that's related, and you may have more, I'm sorry.
No, I don't.
But, but the TIRs, I was very excited about the project, but AMSTI is under them, and it's been in certain schools, teachers and residents, but it's associated with math. Do we have data yet on how successful that has been?
Dr. Ledwell, you can, I mean, this is really the first year of them, so...
So when we, when we get A-CAP results back, we will analyze the schools where those teachers or the teachers and residents have been. We have some data from last year from the formative assessment in the early years assessment system for student growth from beginning of the year to the end of the year in the classrooms where the teachers and residents were.
I just, I found that to be a very promising pilot program, but of course, you know, the data will tell us.
Yeah, and this program, I mean, these coaches are obviously, that's, you know, we've been every year in the legislature to ask for coaches. We've got a big, big law with it, but we've had that in our budget. And that's based on the TIR. So it is a good, I mean, they saw that, what you just said, it's the promising piece of it. In fact, we thought we probably had to have two or three years of data with the TIR before we could go back and say, "Now, you know, we proved this works, give us some coaches." And then they gave us the coaches before the TIRs even, we didn't even have the first-year data. So, so you take your blessings where you can get them. But, but it's a, it is a lot of work coming for that office. And so we will have to staff it up in the next, you know, four to six months. A lot of staffing to do. And if you hear people, you know, I know all of you have networks out there, but if you, there's a, you've got a great elementary principal that you think would like to work here, that's, you know, that obviously have to have a background in math. Most elementary teachers have been, have taught elementary math. Then let us, you know, please talk to me about them or tell them to apply. Or if they don't know if they want to apply, but they're interested in talking about it, have them call me or Miss Martin one. We're, I mean, we're fielding those questions every day. And, and we have had some inquiries from other states, people who are like math specialists in big systems, and they're interested in doing a statewide implementation. Talked to a math, one of them, you know, there are always math guru, well, there are really not a lot of math gurus. Then I talked to one just a few days ago, and I said, "I'm sure that other states have done this. Can you point us?" And he said, "I don't think so." He said, "There's no state that has really done this with math." And he works in many states. And, and so the problem with that's gonna be, and that's a good thing, but the problem with that is like, there's not an equivalent to letters for math. There's numbers, which is done by the same company as letters, Voyager Socris, and we do that. But it's a much, 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 much smaller thing than letters. So there are programs out there, but there's really nothing comparable to letters. Where we would, if we adopted it and said, "We want to try to get, you know, 20,000 teachers through this program," well, there's not the same kind of program. So some of that's gonna be trying to identify things. Florida has done a lot with math. They've really, probably in our region, done the most and done some of the most creative things other than us. I mean, we've done a lot through AMSTI and the TIR and the AMSTI for all. I mean, we're actually one of the leading states doing a lot of the presenting on that, which is why I think that we've got the math coaches. But, but Florida has also done a lot, and so we've talked to them because I, you know, it's not unthinkable that somebody who might be in Fort Walton or Tallahassee would want to move here. That's more probable than somebody coming from across the country, maybe, so anyway.
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, yes.
I've got two other, I think, short questions. One is Nate, when are the next scores, round scores coming out?
They are, I don't think Dr. Sibley's down here. So Dr. Sibley actually chairs the National Communications Group for Nate, if y'all didn't know that. They met last week, and they don't make the decision, but they talk about what, how to, how, you know, what kind of press to do around the release and all. So he said they've, they typically release them in October. There is discussion both about delaying it and about moving it up to September. And they have not, but sometime between September to maybe January of '23. There's a window.
Oh, wow.
But we don't know exactly what it would be. As y'all have talked, this board's talked many times about how Nate's course can be misused and misinterpreted. There is a lot of consternation around the country that this is, that Nate has always been given in odd years, and given in odd years for, I don't know, I won't say all the reasons. But one of the things people like about that is it never falls in an election year. And so there are lots of, there are lots of races out there across the whole country. And so there's a lot of consternation. When I was in Washington last week or the week before, there was talk about, you know, releasing scores that could be misused or misinterpreted right before an election. And so there are two theories. There's a group of people who want to push it to release them after the election, and there's a group of people who want to release them early before the election. And I don't know who's gonna win that argument, but they are having that discussion. But they, I think it's fair to say, though, I'm not obviously on that board or privy to those things, but the inside discussions. But I think there's a big awareness that moving to even-year Nate will have, will have an impact from now on. So if you think about, this is, you know, it's a big election year in Alabama, but two years from now, you'll have a Nate coming out during the presidential cycle. And they've always tried to avoid that. So I don't know. Anyway, just to tell you, the, the window, possibly as early as September, could be as late as, you know, early '23. The window for administering it is closed now, so that the tests are all complete.
We just, if you will give us advance...
As we, as we find out, yeah, we'll absolutely, that you know, we usually don't get a lot of notice about when they're coming out. But, you know, when we do find out, I mean, if they even tell us next month that, "Hey, it's gonna be September," we'll let you know it's gonna be sometime in September.
That's right.
We'll give you what you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just go to their website, and you'll get the, this, oh, there's a big announcement coming. And you can actually request, you can put in your email address, and they'll, and they'll, yeah, they'll let you know. They'll send it to you, so.
The reality is Nate is already a political instrument because we're ranked 52nd. And if you pay any attention to anything in Alabama, that's the headline that every representative, senator, and other statewide officers are already using. So perhaps it would be to our advantage if it came out earlier because it's hard to finish that later than 52nd.
And I've heard great things on schools, so I would give her...
And that's what I get told every time I go to a meeting. I'm sorry, Mr. Dr. Clay, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was just saying, you know, what I've seen in schools, some phenomenal teaching. And so I'm very optimistic that our schools are going up.
Well, I thought we have phenomenal teachers better than 52nd.
But I just didn't know when it would come out.
I thought our performance was phenomenal better than 52nd as we were ranked in Nate last time. And I try to explain to people what it means and what the database means. And all they want to say is, "We're last beyond 52nd." So the fact that we have phenomenal teaching is not in anybody's purview compared to the data. And what I wanted to ask first of all is, given the numeracy, I'm sorry...
Did you have one more question?
No, I'm good.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
The numeracy act, you said that they said we didn't have to worry about the compliance date that one of the persons that sponsored the bill. But the legislature passed the bill. And I'm not certain they have the right to defer those dates that are in the law. So how do you view our compliance and the hiring of coaches and the whole process in compliance with the law? Not what some individual may tell you.
Well, so...
On the record.
Within 90 days, we will convene the task force as is required. The, 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 I'm gonna convene the task force because we won't have a director to convene the task force. But, but we will be in compliance, that the task force will be convened within 90 days. I hope and I anticipate that we will have a director hired within 90 days. It's just a matter of whether that person would be on site. But it says for, for me to make an appointment within 90 days, and so I plan to make an appointment within 90 days. So I plan to be technically in compliance with the law, and everything that has to be done in the 90 days will be done. The office will be established, the director will be appointed, and the task force will be convened. What I was clarifying, so we're gonna comply with the law. What I clarified with them is, when, when that first task force convened, the law just says I have to convene them. I mean, I could convene them for 15 minutes and adjourn, and that, we meet the law. But it won't be one of those two-day, in-depth, dig deep into the subject like the literacy task force is doing yet. It will be eventually. But we will comply with the law. We won't be out of compliance. But I don't want people to come back and say, "Well, the literacy task force was doing these long, deep meetings, and the math task force is doing more cursory kind of work at the beginning." Well, that's because we're trying, we're setting all this up. But it will, but we will be in compliance with the law.
There are two different laws, and you can't, or overlap them.
That's true.
The other thing is the employment of the math coaches within the school systems. How is our program gonna progress to find those teachers? Because the questions that I've been asked, if we can't find math teachers, how are we gonna find math coaches? Who ought to be at least as competent as the math teachers that we can already find?
Yes, sir. So remember, they'll be elementary teachers. They won't be high school or middle school teachers. These will be folks that are K-5 teachers. So they're elementary or early childhood certified. And, I mean, we don't have an abundance of them, but the shortage in elementary school is not as pronounced as it is in, in like high school or middle school.
It's not documented, I'm pretty sure.
So we just, you know, that's one of the reasons, as y'all know, what, you know, when I, I hit the panic button when Senator Orr, the first version, had us hiring over 800 coaches this fall. And I, I, when I talked to him, I said, "There's just no way to do it." Like, we're setting ourselves up for failure. I would love to have 800 math coaches in this fall, but there's no possible way to do that right. And then he said, "Well, then, you know, go spell out how you would do it." So we, we did a schedule, and he accepted the schedule. So we'll do it piece at a time. We don't, none of those meetings will...
What is the schedule? How do you understand the schedule then?
So in the fall of '23, not '22, not this year, but in the fall of '23, we will deploy the first group. It does not say how many have to be in the first group. It does say that we'll start with the schools that have the greatest need. So we're gonna take this year's A-CAP data when it comes in this summer. And we will analyze that and look at the K-5 schools that have, you know, the lowest performance in math. And then those pe, those schools will be first up to get a math coach. We anticipate notifying those superintendents before the start of the fiscal year, so October 1st. Before October 1st, that they have been selected to have a math coach next year. And, and then we'll have a job description for those folks. And they have to sign an MOU with us that the math coach will be a full-time math coach. They'll have been on a 200-day contract, that they will only work in that K-5 school. And they actually can get two. They have, it's, it's a, it's one for school and one for 400 students. So if they have 800 students, they get a second one, if it's a large elementary school. And, and they'll have to sign an MOU with us that they are, that, you know, they're gonna hire this coach, this is what the coach is gonna do, and then we will put money in their allocation for that coach. We will start the allocation sometime next summer. Our anticipation is we would start it around July 1st next year. So they can go ahead and bring the person on, send the per, because we want the person trained in our state coaching model. And so we might end up having to bring them on earlier. We might bring people on, say, June 1st, and to figuring out when the, the training's gonna be. But we'll go ahead and give the district the money to pay for a, for some month... the money to pay for a, for some months before the school year actually starts, to get those coaches trained. But they're going to know by this fall who qualifies for the first round of coaches. I remind you that it won't be equally distributed. Some of you might not get a coach the first year in your district at all, and that would be a positive thing because that means you don't have those lower-performing schools. Some of you may get several of them. But, but that's one of the things I'm very proud of compared to, same way with the literacy act. We, we putting more resources where we have the more struggling schools. Whereas in the O, the previous iteration, even of ARI, as great as it was, it was equal across the board. Everybody got the same thing. Well, it's better to go where the greatest need is. So, you know, this time next year, we're going to have some schools that have a local reading coach, a state-supported reading coach in that school. They're going to have a math coach, and they're going to have a regional math specialist that's working with multiple schools, but all focused on those schools. And that is going to help with our struggling schools because those principals, when they see those people coming, and they're not coming to, to bludgeon you over the head and tell you what you're doing wrong, they're coming to help you, help you analyze your data and help you train your teachers. It's going to be a, it's, it's going to be a good thing. But that's kind of the timeline that, that will roll out. And we'll have, Dr. Legwell's done a masterful job of like, she, she, she understands, like, like Ms. Ziegler does, that numeracy, or the literacy act. She's just read it, read it, and read it, and done charts for us and helped us to get, you know, timelines for everything that has to be done. And I can't say enough about how much I appreciate her diligent work on it, because we couldn't be where we are without her. And Jessica Sanders sitting right behind her. They work hand-in-hand with it, but anyway.
Can you share that timeline in response, excuse me?
Yes, yes.
And I'll go back to whatever.
I want to know, add one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, no, that's all.
That bill had to do with money, and there was a cer, the budget year is October to September 30 for what, $92 million, $94 million? I get asked more about the amount of money that's going into this program and why we already need that much program if we have people trained to teach math. So, how does the delay or the timeline you're proposing affect the expenditure of those funds or the need for a new appropriation?
So, we have, the first year, we have $20 million in two line items dedicated to implementation of the act.
So, that $90 million number that people throw around, or?
$90 million won't come into effect for six years. It's $20 million in the first year.
I want us to be clear. That's what I'm trying to be up to, clear what's out the public domain.
It's $20 million in the first year. The, so, the money, as you pointed out, doesn't start till October 1st. We did get a small amount of supplemental money so we can hire the director and begin setting up the process this summer. So, that money, supplemental money is available immediately. And that's how we'll be able to go ahead and hire at least one person. And we'll hire multiple people in the first 90 days. So, but, but even.
The first fiscal year is just $20 million.
$20 million.
Not so much.
Just.
Not nine.
No, but compared to 2014, which eventually it'll... Compared to what's being...
It'll bump up to 114 million based on the time of, if everything stays the same. It could be more, or it could be less, or they could change the law because it's unique to put that kind of requirement within the law that you have to fund in order to, to maintain what, what is required in that timeline. There could, you know, there's a lot unknown, but.
It's 20, 20 million in the first year.
It's a lot.
I know, but.
Regardless. But I know what you're saying, because there've been 90 millions to 114...
I can't tell you how many meetings one night. He said, "Why are you doing $94 million? You could do so much more with it."
But we're not.
I'm saying it's not us.
Yes.
I mean, all right, the other thing is, there was another law passed on the last day that the governor signed dealing with bathroom assignments. And it imposed upon the State Board of Education, I believe, the implementation of some things based on your birth certificate and some other things. Would you help us to understand and clarify where we're going to do and what we're going to do with that act and that law since our attorney is on court?
No, we don't want an attorney here.
All right.
So, they, yes.
Respond to that act, because that's getting a lot of public attention, as you know.
So, restrooms that are, and this is a key component to this, and we sent this out in Midweek Matters this week, too. So, restrooms that are for multiple-person occupancy, so that's, that's key, have to be male or female. And people who go into multiple-person occupancy restrooms have to be male or female as identified on their birth certificate. So, it gives, we, and that's the process, that is pinned in place in Alabama. There's no real change. We do have districts that have called, you may have gotten some of these calls, that have said, look, we have student or students who have, for whatever reason, for potential bullying or whatever, they have made a plan for that person to use a solitary restroom. So, it's restroom maybe with just one sink and one toilet, and, you know, one student at a time. And, and boys use it and girls use it. There's nothing in this law that changes that. It says it's for multiple-use bathrooms. They're male or female. So, there's some districts that want to have a, a single restroom that is unisex, both men and women can use it, just like a lot of restaurants, restaurants out. That's, that's perfectly allowable. That we, that, we tracked that bill all the way through. We hadn't, I don't think we had any issues with it. Superintendents didn't raise any issues with it. And there was change at the last. There was an amendment that also said that for grades K-5, there are two things to, that are not to happen. One is no instruction in gender identity or sexual orientation that is inappropriate, that is age or developmentally appropriate according to state standards. I can absolutely affirm to you today that you have no state standards in grades K-5 that include instruction in gender identity or sexual orientation of any developmentally or age appropriate. It is not there. So, that, fully in compliance with, it changes nothing. The other component was, or discussion, classroom discussion about those same items. So, even if it's not in state standards, if it's not a part of instruction, but it's a classroom discussion, the teacher has to cut that classroom discussion off. We've, I mean, we've really looked deep into that. Jessica's sitting over there, and I'll let her, she can talk more about it. But, I mean, I, I feel like I understand it pretty well. So, that's the piece we've been, you know, a little more anxious about because what instruction we get, we know what that is. We know we're in compliance. Classroom discussion could come up. As I was interviewed by a reporter who's here in AL.com, and I talked about it.
Don't say gay, don't say straight. I think it's...
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's, we have, yeah, I said, it's not just, don't say gay, it's don't say straight. Those things cannot be discussed in grades K-3 in, in a way that is not age or developmentally appropriate. So, if a child brings it up, like they, you know, from home, bring home a discussion or something their parents have said, or something they heard at church, or whatever, then the teacher cannot facilitate a discussion, say, well, let's talk about that, or how do you think, or how do you think? The law anticipates that that's just not appropriate for K-5. Now, it doesn't address it in high school and middle school, just in K-5. I, I mean, my personal opinion, which you didn't ask for, but you're going to get anyway, is that that's tender, that we, that that is not really appropriate to be for teachers to be having those discussions with children those age. I, I just don't, I mean, I've taught, I've been an elementary school principal. I don't see that being, I'm not saying it won't come up, because those things do come up. But I don't think it's the point of the teacher, and I cannot imagine a teacher wanting to lead that discussion. But, but it does say classroom discussion, which has brought the, which has brought, well, what if it's a discussion in the lunchroom before school? Well, it clearly says classroom discussion. It anticipates a formal school setting, not something going on before school or after school or on the sports field or whatever. So, now, you know, we'll have to come back. It says that we will write a rule on that. And I think the rule will be pretty simple. You take what's in the law, and a violation of that would be a violation of the teacher code of ethics, because a violation of the code is a violation of the code of ethics. You say, well, what, what happens if a teacher violates the code of ethics? Well, on our end, they can have their teaching certificate suspended, you know, probated, non-renewed. I mean, there are a lot of things we can do to their certificate. That's the only thing we have. A local school board can, I mean, they can discipline the teachers, suspend them, put them on leave. They can terminate somebody.
Will there be an administrative code for that?
Will be a code, yeah, be a code action.
The bathroom portion does not require any...
Right. Only the discussion piece does. The bathroom doesn't. But the discussion or instruction piece, it was very clear that our piece, the code writing, is only about the amendment, not about the actual bathroom assignment.
Okay.
And so, you'll see a draft probably in June. We might have it in May, but, you know, right now, we're trying to get all the bills as they're getting signed and do budget stuff. And so, I would, we, we definitely want to have a code for you by the June meeting so you can, because it'll have to lay on the table for 45 days. And, you know, we want to have something in place for the fall.
For schools, yes. Well, you know, the national administration change, you, so, thank you very much for those clear and concise discussions.
Yes, ma'am.
The National Transportation Group extended the mask mandate for public transportation. At one time, we interpreted school buses as being part of public transportation. Is that phase exempted in that extension?
It is. We to, oh, Jason's handling a lot. I don't think I can read all this this fast.
I...
But we are not applying, yeah, we are not applying that. We dropped the school bus mask requirement two months ago, and we are not re-implying.
That was not a national requirement?
Well, at one time it was, but the school bus piece went away. It is still a requirement for planes and subways and some things, but not school buses.
But I want to clarify that.
Yes, sir. So, there is no requirement for masks on school buses unless a local district wants to. And local districts have the authority to, to do that on their own. And that's the, that's what they...
John?
Uh, no, no, I think that's it. I mean, if you go down that paragraph there, if anybody else wants a copy of this, it gives, for example, airplanes, ships, ferries, trains, subways, buses, taxis, private cars. So, Uber, yes, but school buses, no.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you all.
Well, the thing is, just, I would like the timeline.
Timeline, yes, ma'am. Got that.
And then, going back, the new, latest version of the organizational chart that includes everything.
Both sides, yes, ma'am. Got it?
Yeah.
Well, and I've got a check...
We'll sit there and tell everybody.
But this week, the PCG report we got in, it's dated June 2021. I think they come out every quarter, but, and we got a different report, but it wasn't in the same format. And this format was really helpful. I mean, you could see, you know, item by item, it was grouped, and it was...
Yeah, that was monthly.
We'll ask them to change the format. Now, the monthly is just, is another.
You know, it's like marked like that. And, and so, but this is the most recent one, and I think they were coming out quarterly, and not just for me, but for everybody. But it was just really, it was, it's very clear and concise.
I like that. We will ask them to go, to go back to that format and to do, I think they're going to do an updated one after May.
I think one year, that one that you have, those are their, like, formal report back to the legislature, and that's the latest one that we have. The other reports are not, I mean, they may be between them and the examiners or something like that, but I don't think they're being disseminated, like, widely disseminated. I don't think. I will check.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of them when they are somehow?
Yes, absolutely. I thought.
When we get, what we get, we...
I think y'all had more than what I had.
Yeah. There were, yeah.
Well, we just need...
We'll get you, we give you what we have.
I got a margin issue.
And we have sent you what we've gotten. But what we learned was that they were giving, like, grant reports to the examiners more often. That was like how many hours that month they worked and those kind of things. So, there was some confusion there because I called the PCG folks. I said, there are reports I don't even know about. So, that's, but what we'll do, let's just, we'll ask them to take that format, because that's also my favorite format, and do an updated one for this summer, either May or June, and show those, that progression. I think that's what you get to. And then, in the future...
And if they've ever, if they've had others in between since June 2021, that they just haven't sent to us, then I'd like to have those, too.
Absolutely. We will do that. We'll check on that. That contract, by the way, was extended by the legislature for another year.
Yeah, very much.
400, it's 425,000 or 465, one or the other. It was four something.
Okay.
Dr. Mackey, I'm sorry. One last thing. Back to the organizational chart and everything. If there's a possibility, if any of these positions were promotions, would you let us know that? And if so, how it would affect the budget?
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you. And also, as soon as you find out about the revision with the course of study, as we requested.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. We're, in fact, I, when I stepped out to go to the restroom, the Dr. Jones and Ms. Jones were still in the hallway, and they're working on that right now.
30 seconds, next session, if you don't mind, if there's a Power School update on how your talks go, your meetings that you have coming up. I don't, I don't want to labor over it long. I would just like an update, because I know that's a lot of work's going into that. Thank you.
Now, let me make an announcement before, before we, if you're getting ready to, to leave. So, in May, we will be going back to our regular schedule of, of teachers of the year.
Right.
They will be, we will have a program on the night before the May meeting. And I know we haven't, haven't done that in a couple of years. So, the night before the May meeting, we will have a program. Think you've got an invitation, right?
That's ridiculous.
And so, you'll plan that. It's going to be at Shakespeare Festival, maybe? No, the Museum of Arts, Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts.
Same place, sort of.
Yeah, same place we did last year, but it won't be in August, it'll be in May. We, the car, you know, Alpha provides a car for the winner, and we do the car the next morning always. We will not be doing that this year because Alpha has a, an executive conflict, something where like a bunch of their executives are not going to be available that next morning. So, we're going to set that for Friday, May the 20th. And it'll be at your school. So, whoever the winner is, will go to the school. And so, we've set a day aside because that could be in, it could be in Huntsville, it could be in Mobile, it could be here in Montgomery.
Hoover.
Could be in Hoover. Yes, ma'am. So, so, but if you'll kind of maybe pencil in, one of you, we'd like for you to meet us at a school on Friday, May 20th for that. But we, but, you know, I don't know how, where it's going to be, and we'll probably set the time based on how far it is to get there. So, those things are coming up. What's that?
We've got Vander Schools that Monday.
And Vander School that Monday.
Oh, yeah, Vander School, that's that Monday, that same week.
And then, didn't that gentleman say something?
The interviews are that morning, I think.
And where, the morning?
In Birmingham.
Yeah. So, maybe we can do that, and then go to Teacher of the Year.
Wait a minute.
He said that May 11.
The academy craft training.
The craft.
So, it's in Birmingham, and we're here.
He said they would do the, you know, the, their interviewing and getting their jobs and...
So, we're moving in for the whole week, because we're going to be here, so.
Right, that's right.
So, May 11th, what'd you say? I missed that.
He said in Birmingham, yeah. And then, Teacher of the Year is at night, correct? And then, the board meeting's the next day. So, we're here.
And classes, pretty soon.
And classes at Monday.
Classes on Monday. I will see if I can find you all something to do on Tuesday.
I'll make a plan. We're going to be here two years. I won't be able to make the...
Jessica, I think you got to say a lot.
That's the best thing.
Thank you for your time. Safe travels here.
Thank you.
Thank you for saving us.